Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 5th meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here. And I have the invocation, which will be led by Commissioner Strickland, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Perez. When I come over and I'm nice to you, you better know you're gonna be praying.
Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for this day and for this opportunity to represent our residents in the best way we possibly can. I want to thank you for this beautiful city we live in and for the events that are coming this week, the racing out at the Speedway, that everybody will have a safe and uneventful weekend and enjoy themselves, and just guide us to do your will, not ours, in Yeshua's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to item number four, to approval of the minutes of the January 8th, 2025 City Commission meeting. Second.
Do you have a motion from Commissioner Reed? Or take the second from Commissioner Cantu? Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, hear none? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. At this time, we'll have our agenda review. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we're adding item number eight, I, Finance Department Bike Week Sponsorship Funds, $1,000 to Turi T. Small Book Vending Machine Books from the Bike Week Sponsorship Funds of Commissioner Paula Reed. Add $500 to the Halifax Historical Society in support of their annual membership dinner, February the 8th, 2025, from the Bike Week Sponsorship Funds of Commissioner Quanita May. Add item number 10B, Police Department Amendment to City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, to the introduction of an ordinance. That concludes the changes for the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda with the said changes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item 6A is Growth Management and Planning Comprehensive Plan Evaluation and Appraisal Report presented by Blair Nighting, Kim Lee Horn, and Associates.
Last year, we determined that we need to amend our comp plan to reflect changes in state requirements and update since the plan's been updated.
So, following an RFP process, City selected Kim Lee Horn and Associates as a professional engineering and planning consultant that would perform the analysis of the comp plan and suggest the updates and corrections in compliance with state requirements and changes to local conditions. Blair Nighting with Kim Lee Horn will present an overview of the evaluation appraisal report, review process, including general recommended changes and the review of our approval process. Losing my voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for the time. I appreciate it. Blair Nighting with Kim Lee Horn. Nice to see you all tonight. I wanted to just quickly, briefly, I'll try to go quick, it's a little dry presentation, nothing fun, but it's a comprehensive plan. Essentially, we had to, we were hired as Kim Lee Horn to look at your comprehensive plan from a statutory compliance, and we needed to make sure that it met all of the legislative statutory requirements since 2016. And so essentially, what the comprehensive plan is the guiding document for long and short-term growth, and it contains goals, policies, and objectives. And essentially, every, like Doug had already mentioned, every seven years, you're supposed to now analyze it and see if you have to either make statutory changes, community changes, anything like that. And so essentially, we were hired in March of 2024, and from April to now, we essentially reviewed the comprehensive plan, reviewed statutory compliance, we reviewed all of the documents, we updated your GIS maps, we created a one-page data inventory analysis to make sure that the population and the level of service are accurate, and then we made some changes to the comprehensive plan. And then we're here today just to kind of give you an update on what we're doing. And then hopefully, March 27th, we will go to the planning board for transmittal, and then back to you all for transmittal in May, and then hopefully, final adoption in July after the state has reviewed it. So typically, like a large-scale land use amendment, the state will review it, look at it, make sure we are meeting statutory compliance, and then they'll give any comments they have. DEP may look at it, those kinds of things. And then, so I'll quickly try to go through the major legislative changes that we needed to make. So, we did have to update the planning timeframe as required by state statute to 2045. We were required to add basin management action plan goals in the capital improvements to, they basically are attached to the water supply plan. And then, one of the other, number three, is amend the school proportionate share policies to require mitigation set aside until improvements are included in the five-year plan. Essentially, what that means is if someone, a development pays for school prop share, and that improvement is not on their five-year school plan, those monies have to be set aside until it's added to the five-year plan. It's a statutory compliance, the school board handles all of that, but because you have a school element in your comp plan, we had to add that statement. And then, the next three are really tied to floating solar facilities, solar panels, resiliency facilities, we had to add those into the comprehensive plan that those are permitted. And then we also needed to add in the live local provisions, we had to update the Florida State statute definitions for affordable housing, and then we also, in the infrastructure element, which is really potable water, that kind of sanitary sewer, that element, we had to add statement that we would investigate the feasibility of providing central sewer within 10 years of developments of over 50 lots without, on septic. So, it's really just a statutory requirement that we evaluate if those houses need sewer, if they need to be connected to central, and your utility department is already kind of trying to inventory all these already. So, it's already in there, it's not a burden, but it is required by state statute. Okay, some additional updates. One thing we did do, which I think is probably the biggest thing we did with the comp plan, is we combined the conservation and coastal management elements. They were very similar, as you can see. It was a lot of redundancies, and so what we're seeing in the coastal communities is combining those in the comp plan to weed out redundancies and make it just a little bit user-friendly. And then, we also made sure that we referenced the land development code where necessary in the future land use element. One of the big changes was we fixed grammar, things like that that haven't really been touched in a little while. And when you have a document that's been living for a long time, you know, you come, grammar issues come up, and so we had to clean all that out. And then we also removed some projects that you had already completed, so we kind of just removed those policies. We don't need those in your comp plan because it's a completed project. And then we updated the map series, which I already kind of explained. And then, so if you can see, we have, right now, you currently have 14 elements in your comp plan, and what we did is now you have 13. We cut it down a little bit, so it's not as long, and we combined the conservation and coastal management. And then, here are the updated maps. We updated all of these maps as part of this project. These are all the kind of required maps as part of the comprehensive plan. There is a series of maps that are required, so we updated all of those. And then we also added some maps that are required. The coastal high hazard area map is required, and then we added some TPO maps to show their projects, and then we added the roadway functional classification map. And then, for remove maps, so we removed some of these maps, as you can see. The reason we did this is because, one, they're not required by state statutes, and sometimes these change without staff knowing, and then you have to update your comp plan. And then, it's a constant maintenance issue, and if it's not required, and it really wasn't adding any value, we removed them. Okay, so the next few slides, I'll try to be quick. I know it's a little bit dry of a presentation, but I'll go through each element and just kind of highlight what we did. And each element you'll see in bold will be the first goal of the element. And I'm not going to read that to you all, I just wanted to make sure you have the information. But essentially, we reinforced the, for the future land use element, we reinforced the LDC. We also added that live local is affordable housing option. We had to add the resiliency facilities are allowed. We did remove outdated references. We removed, again, projects that were, that you've already completed, especially in like all the neighborhoods. If it was a completed project, we removed it, so maybe it won't be as long. And then we also cleaned up the grammar. So, for the housing element, again, we had to reference the Live Local Act. We wanted to make sure that affordable housing and workforce housing had the correct reference from Florida State statutes, because that's a specific definition in Florida State statutes. Again, cleaned up references, removed outdated references, and cleaned up grammar. Transportation element, nothing major. We didn't, we really just a cleanup of that transportation element. The infrastructure element, we added that statement about the 50 lots and inventorying what's still on septic, and then just cleaned it up. As I stated before, the conservation and coastal management element, we combined those. We thought that it made more sense, it was a little bit more efficient, user-friendly. We required to add the resiliency facilities per state statutes. We were required to add that you cannot make regulations against resiliency facilities. Again, that's state statutes. So, as you can see, really, this is just a major cleanup and statutory review. So, for the rec and open space, no major changes, just cleaned it all up. One thing we did with the redevelopment element is there are a lot of land use categories in the redevelopment element, and so we thought, from a user's perspective, maybe a table having all of those land uses with what's allowed in a table makes sense, so we put that at the end of that element. So, that's the major change in that one. The economic element, no major changes. Historic element, no major changes, just cleaned it up. The intergovernmental, same thing. The capital improvements, we did have to reference the B map with the Water Master Plan. The public schools element, again, I already talked about that, statutory compliance about the five-year plan. And then the property rights element, that's one that basically, the state basically wrote for you all, and I just kind of cleaned it up, made sure it made sense from a user perspective. So, I know it's a little bit dry, but I'm here. If you guys have any questions, you have things you want to talk about. It's really just, the major thing was cleaning it up, making sure it meets statutory compliance, and that was our task.
I have one question. Hi. For the maps that were removed, why would we remove like hospital location maps?
Well, so we felt that in a comp plan, it really didn't add value, just knowing where the hospitals were. I mean, everybody uses Google nowadays. I wasn't really sure why we would need that in the comp plan, but if you feel that you want to keep it in there, I just was worried that if you added a new hospital somewhere, now that map is out of date, and now you got to update your comp plan because someone added a hospital. So, those were the kinds of, that was kind of the background behind changing those maps.
Do you think it's useful to have it there when looking at the broad picture?
I personally don't, because it may be, you know, that it might be a good point, but no one is going to go to the comp plan and say, "Where are our hospitals?" You know, I think that you're going to look at the future land use map and look at where all of those are maybe allowed. I think that makes more sense. But we can, you know, what we could do is we could add notes on the future land use map where those hospitals are, and just kind of combine those two, so it's not a separate map.
Does it bring about an uncluttered document, in your opinion?
I think removing the hospital map makes it a little less cluttered. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not the planner, but can I, I see Dennis back there.
Evening, Dennis Brozek, running directly.
I was just curious, your take on this.
On the hospital?
Yeah.
I think Blair is correct. I don't think we need the comprehensive plan, the maps and the comprehensive plan to tell us where the hospitals are. We'll know where the hospitals are. It's easy enough for us to do that. If somebody's going to come in and look to expand or install a new hospital, they're going to be looking at our future land use map. They're going to be coming to us, and we're going to be working with them. We'll know where this is going. This, I think, having the map is probably something, you know, that was probably generated in the 80s, 90s, when we didn't have the Google Maps or the access to all of these things, so that's one of the reasons why.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you all. I really appreciate it for bearing through and not falling asleep. You guys have a good evening.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to item number seven, which is the citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda, and our first speaker is John Nicholson.
I'm told that I whisper, so I'm going to say it nice and loud. John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview, and he's not even in the room. All right. And I never thought that I whispered, so. On A and B, the building that we had at the marina, it was always meant to be a tourist-oriented. This is the second item that we're not improving the tenants in the building. We have a charity we approved of like two months ago, and now we have a security firm. I would ask that we look in the future for a business that will attract foot traffic, that will attract people to go to the other entities that are there. Right now, the building has outside storage. There are old, broken-down chairs and broken tables sitting in the back, and the customers going to the riverboat have to pass all this outside storage. I don't think it's appropriate that that should be there. It needs to be painted. The landscaping needs to be worked on. It's been 20, 30 years. It needs a little upgrade, a little care. So, I ask that we look at that in the future. And secondly, on the B, it's $6,000 to a group called Daytona Express. Could we find out who Daytona Express is? It's a lot of money. You know. The public doesn't know. All right, thank you.
That looks to be my only speaker on the consent agenda.
Have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, hear none. Those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine, it's our public hearings and quasi-judicial hearings. Item 9A is Growth Management Planning Department, add auto sales and rentals to RDM 5 LDC text amendment. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, Table 5.2.8.3 and Section 5.2.1.19, to add sales or rental of light vehicles as a permitted use in limited areas of the RDM 5 zoning district, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Do we need a vote on this?
No, just a public.
Just a public hearing, okay. And I don't have anyone signed up for this item, so are there any additional questions or comments from the commission? Okay, the public hearing and final action will be February 19th. Moving on to item 9B, it's Growth Management Planning Department, add self-storage and/or mini warehouse facility uses to the BR2 zoning district. This is a Land Development Code text amendment. This is also an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, Table 5.2.8.2 and Section 5.2.1.23, to add the self-storage or mini warehouse facility use as a permitted principal use in business retail to zoning district, subject to use specific standards, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. I have no speakers for this item. Are there any additional questions or comments from the commission on this item? Okay, the public hearing and final action is set for February 19th. Moving on to item number 9C, it's Growth Management Planning Department, SMA Healthcare Semi-Public Use Permit. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving a semi-public use permit to allow medical or dental clinical office as a permitted use for the continued use of a nonprofit outpatient behavioral healthcare facility located at 1220 Willis Avenue and providing an effective date. And this one, I will need a vote on.
Motion and second.
And I do have Mark Carrot here, on behalf of Zev Cohen and Associates, represents the applicant for any questions. No questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Second, and Strickland.
Strickland?
All right. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9D. It's Growth Management Planning Department, City of Daytona Beach Temporary Parking Lot Public Use Permit. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving a public use permit to allow for use of city-owned property located on the northwest corner of Clyde Morris Boulevard and Bellevue Avenue intersection for a temporary parking facility. for a temporary parking facility, subject to conditions and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Cantu and May in that order.
I have no public speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to our item number 10, which is our introduction of ordinances. These are for city commission comment and questions only. Item 10A is information technology systems establishing a cybersecurity-related policy for elected officials. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Daytona Beach establishing a cybersecurity-related policy regarding acceptable use of city information technology system and resources for elected officials, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission on this item?
I do. May I? I have a question for Hassan on some of these. I don't know if you have the ordinance in front of you, but for B, it says the city manager or designee is authorized to remove access to the city's information technology network by any elected official who fails to comply with the policy. Can you tell me what that exactly means, what that would entail?
Hassan Razika, CIO for the city of Daytona Beach. This portion that is in the ordinance is in reference to areas we've got in the policy. So should we see that an account is compromised, we would certainly first reach out to the city manager to get his approval to be able to stop the account from making or doing any more damage. And then, you know, until the account is remediated and we provide access back.
Can you give an example of what compromise might entail?
We can go into more detail, but certainly not on a public platform. But the city cybersecurity platforms we have, we have certain indicators that would either alert us that the account is either sending multiple emails or other methods of notification that we receive that will allow us to take action. But I can't go into detail in the study.
And also, what would be the pros and what would be the cons of having the city manager be the one authorized to do this instead of you bringing it back to the commission to get direction on this?
We certainly can, but the issue we see is if an active threat actor is in the accounts doing damage while waiting for approval, the damage is continuing to be done. So standard protocol is to stop the account from creating more damage or disseminating information such as phishing links, as we see in some other compromises, to first stop, secure the accounts, and then be able to do our triage.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a few questions.
Oh.
Are you okay?
Commissioner May, you need to.
Go ahead, you want to go? Okay. I have a few questions. With our tablet right now, we have Outlook 360. It already monitors our emails coming in and out, and it automatically flags if it's a phishing email and automatically deletes. And all an elected official does is communication only between emails back and forth. And we do not transfer any large files. We don't install any programs. We don't have any high-profile information. And I don't see, because by state statute, you already have the authority if there is something that is flagged and you'll automatically shut down the whole system if something is happening. And you have the authority to do that and then bring it right back up after it's over. So what is the difference between a little tablet that we do communications, just emails back and forths? And have we ever had a problem up here with our Outlook 360?
So I can speak a little bit about the quarantine or isolation of device. The response has to equal the type of risk. So if we determine that the risk is at a larger scope and we're still trying to assess what the damage is, we may resort to shutting everything else down. If we identify that it's a single user that is causing the breach or causing an issue, again, based on the initial information we get, we would first isolate the user because we don't want to interrupt city business when not necessary unless we see information otherwise that would require us to go beyond that.
Okay, so if it already flags and deletes, what are you looking at if it automatically does that already?
Sure. Outlook 365 has some built-in filters. And I'm not necessarily going too much into detail, but security is always approached in a layered approach. You have your initial filter that is by Microsoft. And then there are other filters that we would purchase or subscribe to and protect our systems with. Certainly, there are emails that pass through all these and still make them to the user. There are many variables that systems look into to identify if an email is risky or not risky. And again, I can go into a lot more details, but probably not.
And my next question, if we purchase our own tablet, which is option two on here, we actually own that tablet.
Correct.
And we're working off your network.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
You're working off our email address.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, we are working off that, okay. And I know there's other elected officials around here, state officials, that work off their own email, own device as well.
Yes.
Why should we have to give you access to everything when it's our own device? Could you explain that?
Sure. This is not something that we.
Because I just want to point out something else. So let's say our governor is working off the Florida technology and an employee came up to him and said, I'm cutting you off. Could you tell me what you think would happen?
I'm not sure I can answer that.
Well, I'm just, please answer the question.
The question that you're asking.
Yeah, what's the original question?
The original question is if we own the device, why should you have access to everything we are doing on our tablet when I know there's state officials out there, there's other municipalities that use their own device, and the city has no control of their device? Yes, everything is a public record and I expect it to be a public record when it's city stuff. Why should you be able to see our personal stuff if we are using our own device?
Okay, so if you're using your own device, we don't see your personal information. The information that we see is everything related to the email. So the email transmission being sent from your mailbox or to your mailbox, that is something that we see because you're using our email system. So that's the control that we have. Part of the requirements that Microsoft puts out on these devices.
But I didn't ask that question. I'm asking if it's our own device.
Correct.
You want control of our own device?
We're not.
No, he did. If you read the 77 things in there, and plus, I actually believe if you read the 77, I think the policy is in there.
Yep.
It actually is saying you will have our password, you will be able to get into our computer. It does say that in there.
If you can point out, maybe I can try to find it.
There's 77 there. I'm not going to set in Port Orange. I personally think we need a meeting because we are dealing with two separate issues here. We are dealing with the city charter, okay? The city charter form is commission, management, and we are actually giving authority to the city manager over the elected body. We were elected by the residents to give our authority up to the city manager. Now, do I think there needs to be some cybersecurity? Do I agree with you? Absolutely. But we are dealing with two separate things here. We're dealing with our city charter, which I took an oath to honor our city charter. But, and by giving up our authority to the city manager, I personally can't do it and I will not do it. Maybe my resident, my commission will, and even if they do it, I still will not do it. Now, security, I agree with you, and me and you have been through this before with the state about the cybersecurity classes. I'm willing to take it, but I had to make a point to you because you actually came to me and said it was a state law. Me and you both know it's not a state law, and Ben can tell you it's not a state law because they came back and said that is for employees only. It does not apply to elected officials. And Mr. Gross can actually verify that. And they actually said if you would like a state law for those cybersecurity classes that we, you would have to lobby the state if you think we need that. Am I correct?
I can't make comment on what you're saying.
Am I correct about that? That state law is for employees only.
The state law refers to employees. It doesn't clearly include officials.
Yes, okay, so.
It doesn't clearly.
No, it's.
Wait, wait.
If I can.
Let him ask.
Yeah, that's the reason for the ordinance, because the state law doesn't include it, which according to staff leaves a hole in the cybersecurity. And so that's why there's this ask that you authorize the manager to temporarily suspend access if there is a cybersecurity threat, because the law doesn't allow it. If the law did allow it, we wouldn't be here.
Correct. Okay, so I personally, I mean, I don't know how you feel because there's a lot to take in. When we did have a meeting, we did ask you to come back and give us how much it would cost for a stipend for our own network, I mean, our own tablet and for internet. We did not ask you to come back and give us a policy and have the city manager. It's all taped, it's all on recording in that meeting. We could actually ask for that, couldn't we, Mr. Gross?
I'd have to look at the legislation that allowed the commission to meet in the shade regarding the cybersecurity. I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah, because we had a court reporter there.
We did, and I don't, I can't tell you offhand under what circumstances that information could be published.
And like I said, I am not disagreeing. I mean, believe me, I believe you should have to protect the city from any security problems you think there is. The problem I have, we are talking about two separate things here. We're talking about our city charter and we're talking about cybersecurity. So I personally feel like if it's a shade meeting workshop, whatever we need, we need to go back and discuss this more because we haven't discussed this. There is 77 policies and it's giving IT and it's giving the manager authority over the elected body, which our city charter does not state that. I don't even personally think we have the authority to give the city manager authority over the elected body, which that would be nice to have an AG opinion as well. So I am done.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question and reference. Could you share where does it give the city manager, me, authority over the elected officials?
It's actually in the ordinance as well.
I'm.
You can, it actually gives you authority. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, hold on.
The ordinance actually on section four states the city commission retains the final authority to determine compliance with the policy in the event of disputes. What is key in this that the, as the chief administrative officer is to make sure that we protect the integrity of our network systems. And so what would take place is if you look at the policy that was worked on by Mr. Hassan, Mr. Sexton, and Mr. Gross, it denotes that if there is a network issue that comes with an elected official, it says the city manager or designee is authorized to remove access to the network by any elected official who fails to comply with the policy. This will be your policy. The policy is not in place now. Where practical, prior to removing such access, the city manager or designee shall provide the elected official advance notice and advise the elected official of the steps needed to correct the failure. This is to protect the resources from cybersecurity threats or to comply with the cybersecurity best practices. The policy is not in place. I think that this is all public information in reference to many of the cities that have had issues or concerns in reference to cybersecurity issues and how much money they've had to pay out. So it's not a matter of me asserting any authority over any elected officials. It's protecting the integrity of the almost 90,000 residents, 330 some million dollar budget, you as elected officials, that we don't have issues with our insurance company. If there was someone that took it upon themselves to try to cause havoc or harm utilizing elected officials, and so there is not some one person that's just going to turn off the system. I get the same alerts. Hassan, as I've had to do the phishing and retake the exams because I'm a target as the administrator that's signing everything. But please be assured, this is not the final document. This is a first reading. As elected officials, if you all want us to change something from the policy that meets your criteria, that's what we're going to do. And that's why we thought it was important to bring this back as an ordinance and not just put it under consent because we understand the severity of this issue. All of our administrative staff are going through the same process. We are going to, Hassan has us going through tabletop exercises, sending in information, and I'm sending through it as well. But I know one of the things Commissioner May had a particular question in reference to earlier of how much, how many cities have been affected. And this was communicated in one of our meetings, that the cost of ransomware recovery for some of the cities that we looked at, Atlanta, Georgia, $17 million. Baltimore, 18.2 million. City of Dallas, 8.5 million. City of Hamilton, 7.4 million. Suffolk County, 2.5 million. The cost of phishing, City of Blaine, 1.5. East Point, 1.2. Fort Lauderdale, 1.2. City of Memphis, 773,000. The city of Fresno, 600,000, were some of the cities that Hassan provided to us. Again, this is your policy. If you implement it, I will act upon the policy. If you desire that there is no authority from the city manager or from the CIO to turn off any system that is affected, infected with anything, we will not turn it off. We'll call a special meeting and try to get you all here to authorize for us to close off something if there is something on our network that's causing us problems.
Okay, so you asked me, it does say the city manager is authorized to remove access to the city's information technology network by any elected official who fails. That's giving you authority over our charter. And, and wait a minute, yeah, it is. It's giving you authority over the elected body because this policy states upfront, it says policy for elected officials. Now, you already have the ability by state law if there is a ransom or something to turn us off automatically. You are aware of that, correct?
I am, yes.
Okay, so why do we need this law, policy, or ordinance for the city manager? Because you can already do this. This is like overkill. There is no other city in Volusia County that has this. I have called. And I know you said Port Orange. Actually, I talked to the new mayor over there. He wasn't even aware of that app, actually Sunday, that you told me about. And with all those, and all those city manager, I am talking. I was talking. And now my question is to you, is you named off all those other out of state, were those elected officials for communicating back and forth? Those ransom?
Were the, I don't know the exact.
You don't know, okay.
But I did have a question. Do you recall when this was approved in Port Orange?
I believe it was November 19th.
Thank you.
Yes, and that was before the new mayor got in and he said it was not explained to him like this, because I did talk to him Sunday, and he was going back to look at it. Furthermore, they do not carry tablets, just so you know. They have computers that are set up in their homes that the IT does. You are aware of that, correct?
No.
Okay, they do not carry tablets whatsoever anywhere. They don't have it, but they don't get enough, according to the mayor, they don't get enough emails like the city of Daytona does with our residents back and forths. Once in a while, they'll get a email that they have to return, but most of the residents don't expect return emails. This is exactly. This is exactly what I was told on Sunday.
May I answer the question?
Yes.
Brought earlier. So the reason this was initially brought up was due to the application that was on the tablet. IT deals with every user in the city based on the policy that we already had in place. There was a disagreement on how the policy was only applicable to employees and not elected officials, and we agreed. And what we said was we probably, and I think this was in the last meeting, which is why this was worked on, we need to establish a policy specific to elected officials because the policy is how IT operates. If every single IT staff member is not here today and a new set of people were hired, they would deal with the commissioners based on the policy that's already in place because that is a standard policy for everybody. By establishing a separate policy specific for, for the elected commission, we are excluding certain things that are applicable to staff and making a separation, what is allowed for the elected commission and what is not allowed or what is allowed for staff, just to separate the two. Again, we operate based on policy. We operate based on how things are documented. That way, my staff knows what is allowed and what's not allowed. And that is why we brought basically a policy based on best practices, industry standards, security frameworks that we have to attest to and abide by. And we put something that is just specific to the commission to bring it to your review and say, what of this do you not like so we can take back and review? If anything proposed here goes beyond or may pose more of a risk, we can then address it and say, you know, maybe this could be a compromise or we may need to come up with a different solution altogether. We were tasked to provide something that was just separate to make that distinction between the two. So the reason the city manager's information or city manager is here is because when it comes to staff, it is my discretion to turn off their access based on what we see. We're not waiting for authority. But as a respect to the elected official, rather than us doing it directly, we contact the city manager and let him know of what the situation is going on. Based on the dire emergency that we're seeing, it may have to be the city manager to give us permission to do it at the time, or we may have to do it just to secure it based on the type of issue that we're seeing. However, if the level of criticality is not up to that point, then as the city manager said, it can be brought up to the elected body to review and give us guidance on.
Okay.
All we're doing is we're looking for guidance from the.
I completely understand and I do not mind having a policy in place, but it's a policy that I think the elected body needs to agree on and I don't want to go against our city charter as well. So if there was going to be someone in charge of us, would be the mayor who could turn us off if there was something. But I cannot see, but no, I could not see the city manager because we are going against our charter. Do you get what I'm saying? Plus, when you already have the authority, if there's something going on, to shut the system down by state law. So why, I mean, if you call any other city, they don't have this policy in place for their elected officials. It's like overkill. And, and I'm not finished. It is overkill. They do not have a policy in place. Am I correct? And the policy, and the policy, if it's their own, that's why a lot of elect officials, they, they use their own phone, own everything to be on the network because they don't want to deal with stuff like this. Okay. But you're pretty much saying even if we use our own stuff, you still have, you want a control of it. You don't own our stuff.
No, no, I, I think, I think what he's saying is simply that when we are operating within the email system, and that's all that he can shut off. He can't do anything else on your device. You just won't have access to the email, the city email, not Google or any other.
But I, but I understand. But if we have other stuff on there, you can actually see the.
Yeah, we cannot.
It's in, no, he can't. If there's a 77, read all those rules in there. That's why I think we need more time on this.
I read some of them. I read most of them.
Because he actually does have access.
May I say something? He's saying that he does not. And if we're going to say that, that it does, then you need to be prepared to cite the specific number so that we can address that number.
Okay, you want me to do, I will cite all of them.
I'm understanding what you're saying in regards, we don't need to cite all of them.
You read 77 of them.
But I understand what you're saying, that if we use our own device, anything you're concerned with is the email. Am I correct?
Correct. And, and the portion on the policy that is only specific to your own devices is numbers 42 to 51. That section is for the bring your own device. Anything else outside of that is under the premise of a city issued device and then within the other operations of getting an email. The information we get, no matter if it's a city device or a personal device, is the IP address where you are connecting from. There is nothing we can do or filter out. This is Microsoft that provides that information, maybe the device type so we can tell if it's a tablet or if it's a laptop, version of the browser, and that's it.
You're not fixing our own tablet. It states in one of.
We're not. What I'm, what I'm relating is the, the extent of the information that IT sees from a personal device, my personal cell phone, if I was to check an email, the information I get from our dashboard is the IP address of where I may be. It could be the IP address of my house. It could be the IP address of my cellular SIM card while I'm outside. It can say that the type of phone that I have and the type of browser. That's the extent. And that's why we're being transparent to say, even though you're using a personal device, there is information that's being revealed to us, but only because it's Microsoft that gets that information and makes it viewable because it is part of our forensics tool. If we see a flag that you are logging in from another country and the system is looking at your IP address and seeing where the IP address is coming from, it's a method to make sure that it's coming from a legit place.
You already delete and automatically, it automatically does that.
No, there's a lot of emails that still make it through a lot of this.
I don't understand why you need this policy in place when you have the authority to already shut it down. Please just answer that. I'm not asking you. I'm asking.
No, but he works for me.
I know, okay.
Thank you.
Do you have?
Yes, because you all asked for the policy. The commission asked for us to bring a policy back that definitely reflected what the commission wanted and not what he wanted. If you do not like the policy, you all changed the policy. Hassan, as a cybersecurity expert, is bringing a policy to make sure to protect the infrastructure of the city of Daytona Beach in the best interest of you all. I don't want him to sit up there and be bombarded with things when he's only doing what's being requested by me. If you have an issue or concerned about that, it needs to be dealt with with me.
Excuse me.
That, that's all I'm saying.
I'm asking questions. This is important thing. So you're telling me I can't ask questions?
No, I am not saying that.
That's what you just said, pretty much.
What he's saying is that he, he, he still works for him.
I understand that, but he said he's not going to have him bombarded with questions.
Well, he did say that.
He did say that.
Okay.
He's being asked the same thing over and over.
I'm not asking the same thing over and over.
It's repetitive.
Okay.
Am I asking what other city in Volusia County has a policy like this for their elected officials?
My research is, is only specific to our users. The only reason I looked at other cities is because you made reference to Port Orange.
My next question is, if I don't want to be on your network whatsoever, I can actually, and which I already checked with a lawyer, I can actually put my own email, my own phone number, and then without the link, have it put up on the city website. And then that will solve everything. And then I will take it further because I will not sign your policy whatsoever because it is overkill. And you've been told already by the state that if you want a bill, that you need to lobby. So I personally will take this as far as I can go. I'm just saying you guys can do whatever you want, but I am not doing this.
But Mr.
Because I, I swore on my Bible, when I swore, got sworn in, I would not, I would go by our city charter. This is not going by our city charter, given IT or anyone else authority over me.
Well, let me ask you this.
And it's not his policy?
No, it's not his policy. It's a policy that we can either accept or reject. That's our choice.
Absolutely.
So at the end of the day, whatever we decide as a body will be what we decide and we will govern ourselves in accordance with that and anything that if you choose to, you know, refrain from that, then by all means do so. But I, I want to ask you, what would you change? Because I understand the concern that you have as it relates to state law and the charter. And I respect that, but I also understand the gravity of the cyber world. And sometimes things are not necessarily 100% clear legally, but you have to do what's in the best interest of your institution, your agency, your city. So whether you participate or not, what would make this something that you could think is reasonable so that it would protect our resources while not running afoul of the law? Because basically, we're just legal whipping. We're using the law to say that we don't want to govern ourselves according to something that's going to protect our citizens. What is it that we could do that would not circumvent the law, but be reasonable and not run afoul of what you, of your value system and the oath that you took and the same oath that we all took?
Um, I said I don't mind doing a ordinance regarding security, but the city manager, our charter, we are a commission management gov government. We are not management commission. Oh, you get what I'm saying? We, thank you.
We're not manager first, we're commission first.
Right. Our city charter is commission manager. We are giving the manager authority over the elected body.
Because he can, because he can turn off our device.
Correct. Without, without coming to us.
No, he said that he would have to come to you.
No, read the whole ordinance.
It doesn't have to come to you. It's if they see something. And, and that's the whole point. Okay, so is there not a way to massage that into?
IT, there's already a law. IT can shut the system down.
Okay.
What, what is, why are we doing something when he already has the power? He already said he does.
He doesn't want to turn your system off without having to go to the manager.
But he has the power.
If I can, what Commissioner Cantu is saying is that the law gives the IT director power to shut the entire network down.
Not the individual.
Right. That's one. And, and two, I, I know that there's, I'm sorry, I know there's concerns about the charter. And Mr. Mayor, you sounded sympathetic to what Commissioner Cantu was saying. This would be a legal delegation of authority under our charter. We researched this issue before we prepared the ordinance. I researched the issue again when Commissioner Cantu called me and, and I had my staff research the issue. And I'm not aware of any legal impediments that would prevent you from authorizing the manager by ordinance to, to implement this. So.
So do you, do you get that then if he would have to shut down the whole system, he can't shut down individuals?
He has authority to do whatever he needs to do. It's not the whole system, but he does have the authority to do the whole system as well.
Okay. But this is not an impediment to our charter. We're not in violation of the law if we choose to follow this.
You are not.
Prescription that is.
And Ben, I've had other people say different.
I understand and I, I respect your opinion, but I've researched it and I disagree with you.
I know.
So I, I want to chime in real quick for just a minute.
Please.
And that is, you know, y'all know how I feel. I don't really care what other cities are doing. I trust my staff, the staff that we have here. This person right here is, is who we pay a whole bunch of money to keep us protected. I have to go with him first.
Protect this with the department?
Right, but I, I, I have to go with him first. And I trust the staff that we have here more than I trust the city of Oklahoma or the city of Miami or the city of right next to us, Ormond, or the city of, I don't think their people are any smarter than our people. And I don't think that their lawyers know the law any better than Ben knows the law. And, and that's who I'm going to roll with. I'm going to run with, I've always run with what this, the city attorney has said because I know that he's going to have my best interest as opposed to some city manager, I mean, some city manager or city lawyer that I don't know and doesn't know me and doesn't care whether or not I'm in an orange jumpsuit tomorrow or not. So having said that, I just want to make sure that if staff feels that this is the better way to go because it gives us an extra layer of protection, even if it is overkill, which I don't believe it's overkill. And you and I, we agree sometimes, we disagree sometimes, and, and that's what it is. I stand where I stand, you stand where you stand. Even if it's overkill, if it gives us a, a extra level of protection over cybersecurity, there's not going to be one day that I wake up and feel like Derek Fietra is in charge of me. He'll never be in charge of me. I know who I am in, 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 in respect to him. I know who he is in respect to me. I know that he is not in charge of me. However, if there is something that he needs to do to protect the city, to protect myself or to protect, to protect this body or to protect our whole infrastructure, then he get paid a lot of money and I expect him to do that. That's what I expect you to do. So, you know, that, that's where I stand on this issue. I'm going to run with it because I feel like it's, it's not an overkill or not asking too much or asking us too much. If, if we were asking him to, you know, we give him authority over a lot of things a lot of times. There are a lot of things that he has authority over that he doesn't have to come to check with us first on. Majority of the things he doesn't come and check with us first on a day to day basis. So I, I think it'll be all right if he.
And with all respect, yes, we can give him authority to do a lot of things, but it, I mean, almost anything except over the elected bodies. So that's where me and Ben disagrees. And with all due respect, you said you always agree with the city attorney?
Well, I didn't say I always agree with him. I said I'm going to go with him above other people that I don't know and that don't know me.
Because a lot of people didn't agree with him in the Department of Licensing, which some of the things that come to me from the city manager, I don't agree with. Just like that Beach Street building, I was perfectly right on it.
But I don't know if you were perfectly right.
Oh, yes.
I mean, you, you, you had your opinion on it.
Oh.
Wait, wait, you know, you know, I'm, I'm respectful.
Go ahead.
I listen. I don't know if you were perfectly right on it. I know that you had your opinion on it. So that doesn't, just because you have an opinion doesn't mean that you are perfectly right on something all of the time.
Okay.
That's just, wait a minute. I'm, I'm not finished here. So all I'm saying to you and all I'm saying to the body, because I'm talking to the body, is that we give, yes, we give the manager, do I agree with everything the manager does? No, I don't agree with everything the mayor does. I don't agree with everything my mama does, and I don't love nobody more than my mama. So, you know, I don't agree with everything I do sometimes. I was in my classroom today and I was just yelling and fussing. I was like, no, I'm not agreeing with me yelling and fussing today. But, you know, what I'm saying is, nobody's going to always agree, but however, all I'm saying is that I'm okay with this particular situation right here. I don't feel like that that's going to give the manager any extra lead up on me or any authority over me. I don't feel that way.
Okay. Commissioner Henry, just so you know about the Beach Street building, I guess you haven't read the seven articles. What is going on is under investigation, actually, they found them guilty and there's a fine and everything else, and it is loaded with asbestos, just so you're aware.
A lot of buildings are that way and people go and they, a lot of buildings are loaded with asbestos and people still go and break them down and tear them down and they make new buildings out of them.
And I'm not going to sit and argue, but it is illegal what's going on in there.
I will never argue.
And I've seen articles on Mr. Fietra as well. I mean.
Okay, that, that's not germane to the topic. Beach Street. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. As you all know, my house is under construction and in my account, there are funds to cover those expenses. And last week, I got a phone call from my bank asking me was I in Texas because someone was trying to take funds from my account. And I said, no, I'm sitting at my desk in Daytona Beach at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. But because they knew I probably wasn't there, they put a hold on it, but they were calling me to confirm whether or not. me to confirm whether or not I was trying to expend those funds. And I would have been in a, a lot of trouble if those funds had been taken from my account because it was a nice amount. They didn't know what was in there, but they were just trying. And I'm grateful that Space Coast Credit Union caught that. I don't, as Commissioner Henry, I don't have a problem with this, particularly now that the lawyer has spoken up and said that it's no legal, what's the terminology you use, Ben?
No legal impediment.
No legal impediment for us to do this. We have the authority to do this. We have to keep our citizens and the city in the forefront of all the things that we consider doing. And if this is going to keep us from, what if they were to hack and take the payroll for our staff, from our staff?
Do we have that information?
What information? I'm just giving an example.
I'm just asking, do we have all, any high, uh, high-profile information?
Well, if they get access to.
All we have is emails back and forth.
If they get access to the, to the system, they can hack and probably go into anything. Am I correct, Hassan? So it's not so much that we have access, we're giving them access to the system is what we're saying. And I, I, I fail to understand, I know what the charter says, but I fail to understand this, this hardening of the heart that we give the manager the authority to just say, and you indicated you would call the person first. That might not be in the policy. Is it in there?
It is in the policy.
That you would call the elected official first and say that there is a problem and we may have to shut you down because.
And if it's not in the policy, just put it in the policy.
Put it in there, exactly.
Make the policy what you want the policy to be so they can be successful. I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's okay, Mr. Manager, thank you.
Section to the city manager or designee shall provide the elected official advance notice and advise the elected official of the steps needed to correct the failure.
Well, just, there is, there is a caveat that says where practical. And then the exception to where you would provide that notice is in the last sentence of that section. Nothing, and I don't, I don't have it right in front of me, but nothing would prohibit you from suspending access where necessary to protect the city from cybersecurity threats.
Same thing with, with Hassan them. They, I'm his supervisor, but I had hit something wrong and they stopped me from using and I had to go back and get my stuff reset into a test.
Oh, I've had to do that at Riddle. They, they send us phishing things to catch us. And then it tells me, bonk, 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 you have to take 10 more minutes of training. No before.
I'm just curious why no one wants an opinion from the AG.
Frankly, for me, I, I want to get this done because.
Hand, were you up here speaking?
If you're in the audience, let's not talk out and let's not engage the audience from up here. I don't, I want to get this managed and handled and, and move forward.
Okay, we can move forward.
Personally, I'm not saying just tonight, I'm just saying in general and answering your question.
Yeah, we can move forward. I already know what I'm going to do. Go ahead and move forward and we have second reading for our votes, so.
Okay. Do we have any comments from over here? Commissioner, you did have some a while back.
It's a very simple question. So the first thing is, if there's something suspicious with, let's say, my email, you can go in, city manager, hey, there's something that I'm not noticing. We know, we are noticing it, we're going to shut that down. Not a problem. I'm assuming it shows a different email at that point and we continue working from that point on. The other, the other approach, if something happens in the system itself that has nothing to do with us as elected officials, and you have to shut the entire system down. So one is the individual, me, or it's everybody, correct? With the city? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Strickland?
I'll go last.
Commissioner Parrish?
I'm sorry, just two more things. I just want to ask Commissioner Cantu, is it because the city manager is the one going to be doing it? What if we have somebody else do it? Is that, or you just don't want it to be done at all?
Like I said, IT already has the ability to do it.
Okay.
And I am not going against the city charter.
Okay. And the other thing I had, on our emails, like on our phone, are we connected to the, when you say network, because I'm thinking in my head, I'm going to download something, it's going to get on the computer and then it's going to find its way to utilities and do stuff with the water and all that, okay? But on my phone, if I download something that I receive, is it still going to be able to get on the network? If it's malware? Are we all connected to the network on our phone?
The hypotheticals of how a user can be compromised are some of the things that we're seeing now that are even more exponential with the ability of AI and how crazy it gets. What we're trying to relate to everybody is the type of risks that, that is available. So to maybe give a, a, a better hypothetical is, we're trying to make sure that your front door is locked. We don't know if somebody gets in, has access to the kitchen or to the bathroom from the inside. Our worry is at the perimeter. So when we're trying to give you advice on your personal phone or your city phone, we want to make sure we're giving you the best practice to make sure your phone should not be rooted or jailbroken, which is taking it outside of Microsoft, sorry, Apple and Google's security. We want to make sure that you're downloading apps from the Apple Store, but specifically in your email, if you're downloading attachments, if you're downloading anything, there is a risk, not as much as on computers, which is why we prefer to give tablets instead of computers because computers are much more vulnerable than tablets. But at the end of the day, it is still an electronic device that has its risks. Our concern, more so, not necessarily just to download, is the, the chance of somebody phishing you for your credentials, for you using your passwords. There are many attacks and I'm more than happy to sit and, and give you some demonstration of what's there.
I, I get it.
But the risk is just the hygiene and the ability to be able to recognize something.
So as a group here, if we're looking at this policy and we remove that it's the city manager or his designee is authorized to do this and we have it that it's our IT director is authorized to do this, does that make a difference?
Why don't we go down instead of?
Well, I guess what's in question is that.
Because he already has the authority. It doesn't make any sense.
I honestly think that this is just about the city manager.
The city of Daytona Beach is.
I really just think this is about the city manager because if we're willing to go down and have somebody below the city manager to be above us, I, I think that's highly problematic.
I think this is first reading. We don't vote on it for two weeks. We've got time to think about it, ask additional questions. I say we move on.
I mean, even in one of those policies, because I wrote some of that stuff down, he, who determines how much, how much we're doing on this personal, on our own personal tablet? Who determines that? Because that's in one of those policies.
I'm not sure.
How is that determined? Okay, if it's our city-owned tablet, it's ours. I mean, it's ours, more on your network. It actually states in one of those policies, which I'll have to go through all of them and I'll be prepared, believe me. But it also, but it also states that, it also states that the city manager pretty much determines how much time we're on our, using it personal, personal time or something like that. It's in there.
Okay, why don't you, since you're going to go through it, bring it back. Tell us the ones that you don't like and you don't agree with. We willing to compromise.
And that's what I said before.
We're willing to, because it's not set in stone yet. Go look at the ones you don't like and say, hey, I don't like this. And we can discuss the ones that we don't like and we can get rid of those. It doesn't have to be this complicated.
No, it doesn't.
We really can work together on this and really get to something that we all feel like we are, we can agree with. And then at the end of the day, even if you decide not to do what the rest of us do, if you say, I'm not, I'm just not going to sign my name to that, we still going to put some of your ideas in it that you don't like or you possibly may or may not like. At least I will. That's all I got. That's all I got.
So you can fix some of it, even if you can't get to, to a home run. If you can get to 90%, you'll work.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I will be prepared for all 77 policies over elected official. But, I mean, I will, believe me, because some of this stuff, I mean, is overkill.
Mr. Mayor, I would, would say.
Wait, wait. Are you finished? Go ahead.
And it is overkill and plus you are, I don't care what anybody says, you are going against the city charter.
Okay.
So.
Got you.
And I will have that answer, believe me, by the next meeting.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, any item that comes before this commission, I'm the last person that sees it. It goes from the department director or the staff person, department director, goes through finance, goes through the city attorney's office, clerk's office. I don't sign anything unless it's been reviewed by legal. You can look on your actual documents in your agenda packets and it shows you who are the sign-offs. It actually shows you the date. And I'll use one for example. Dennis Marozak, January 21st. David Russell, Assistant City Attorney, January the 24th. Benjamin Gross, City Attorney Approved, January 29th.
I think we all read our agendas.
Kathleen Rosado, because I'm doing this for the general public, January 20th, and then Derek Fiecher. So when she says who has all gone through, it's gone through all of those individuals before I sign on the document so they can present it. Secondly, many of these items could have been discussed if Commissioner Cantu would meet with me to discuss items for an agenda, but that is not what she wants to do. She wants to do it at the public meeting because many of her concerns, we may have been able to work out in discussions if I had the opportunity for a general review to understand what her concerns are. But on this particular item, I have not had one conversation with her in reference to her concerns for this particular item until tonight. And I'm just being.
You are absolutely, absolutely correct. Because after you did not, after, well, I don't know who gives the authority, after that resolution wasn't put online for the residents and I had to put it out. And then it was not, the resolution was not there. I actually, I think there was a resident out there that asked for it to be put up, out as well. And it is now out. The resolution for us, given the sending manager authority, it was not put online with the rest of the information.
I'm in the meeting though?
No, I made sure it was put out. I, Mr. Gross, did I call you about it?
Yes.
And was it in there?
I don't think it was.
Thank you.
I told you I didn't know whether it was in there because.
You, you went and looked. I told you to look when I was on the phone. Thank you.
And I, and I suggested that you talk to the manager.
Correct, you did. But it got put in there.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Commissioner, Parrish, did you have, you had some more, didn't you? You won, we went through one and we went through all your items. You're done? Commissioner Strickland?
You know, this is serious business, what we're talking about here. And we're here to do what's best for our residents and best for our city. And right now, as we're talking and personalities are banging into each other and everything, some clown in the Ukraine or Nigeria or somewhere could be putting ransomware on our system. And then we're going to be in a real mess down the road if we're not prepared for that. And I don't want to be held responsible by the residents for sitting up here arguing over split hairs. It was on. At any rate, thank you very much. I don't remember where I was, but any, at any, any, did you get shut off then?
I feel compelled to say, being African-born, that we cannot say such things about other cultures. I'm sorry.
Okay, take Nigeria out of there. Street from me or across the street from here, you know, I didn't, Jesus.
It's okay, it's okay.
It's not okay. You know, the truth is, we could be getting hacked right now when we're arguing. Listen to Commissioner Cantu go on and on because she's got a gripe with the manager. I hate that she had, don't interrupt me. Don't do it.
What are you talking about?
But anyway, you're fixing too. You can't control yourself. But anyway, we need to do what's best for this city, best for, for our, to protect our information, our money and that sort of thing and, and stop all this arguing. This is just crazy. What's the best thing to do to protect our information and our finances with the city? That's what we need to be doing. Splitting hairs over. Who's telling who what? When our system gets locked down and held for ransom, then what do we do? Is it, does it matter who tells us? Does it matter who fixes it? I don't care who tells me. I don't care who fixes it. I would like to do something to make sure that it doesn't happen. So there you are.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say one other thing because I didn't bring up Commissioner Strickland's. I have all the right to represent my residents to how they want me to represent. Matter of fact, I won against my opponent by 20 points. How much did you win against your opponent? No, he's being, no, he was being nasty to me. And believe me, I love living rent-free in your head.
You're not rent-free in my head, darling. But let me tell you something, I won 2-1.
No, I'm telling you, you're the one that started it. I didn't even mention.
Ladies and gentlemen, disengage, disengage. Let's not, let's not speak unless you're called to punt. All right, well, well, you, you, well, I said, let's not. That's, that's for all of us. Okay. And we're not going back and forth. Sir, you've done a, a phenomenal job tonight and we appreciate the work that you do and we thank you. You may be seated. Thank you.
Keep us safe.
Now, this item is a first read. So if this is a first read, I shudder to think what a second read will be like. I have been up here for better part of 15 years in one capacity or another and I have not had us come to this, these terms. So that's not encouraging. Whatever it is that we have on second read, I would admonish us to be well-prepared, detailed, expect to speak on this item in turn, without any interruptions. The use of the gavel will be used if necessary. We're, we're not going to debase our work. That's not going to continue. So we have another item? This item is done.
Yes. The public hearing and final action for that item will be February 19th. So we're going to move on to item 10B. This is the Police Department Amendment to the City Ordinance, Chapter 10. This was the addenda item added. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending section 10-2 of the, of chapter 10 of the City Code of Ordinances, creating section 1010 and 1011 related to alcoholic beverages to enhance existing restrictions on off-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Enter any questions or comments from the commission on this item. The public hearing and final action is set for February 19th. Moving on to item number 11, it's our administrative items. Item 11A is the Economic and Strategic Opportunities Department Bike Week 2025 Master Plan for Public Property. This is a resolution. A resolution relating to the Bike Week 2025, providing for motorcycle-only traffic and parking in various locations, suspending parking regulations in the commercial areas of the Controlled Parking District from February 28th through March 9th, 2025, in accordance with section 94-218D of the City Code, authorizing the city to operate paid parking lots at various locations in the Main Street area, authorizing various temporary activities on public property and providing an effective date.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
And I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. John Nicholson?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, John, that is.
All right, come on, brother. We, we haven't voted yet.
I'm positive I have an 11A up there somewhere.
I'm almost positive you do too.
Okay. John Nicholson, 413 West Granby Avenue. Two things. There was comments made, the possibility of allowing for motorcycle parking one mile north and one mile south of Main Street. That would include almost. That would include almost 80% of Beachside. Um, I'm hoping that's not in this one, okay?
That's not.
Secondly, well, you never know, it might just kind of scoot in there. Um, secondly, um, in the past, we've had problems with the maintenance of property along Main Street for, um, commercial use. And I've been fighting for years that they would, should maintain their property. And you put that into your regulations, they should maintain their property if we're going to give them any exceptions. I'm asking you to do that with public property. Any public property that we won't use, I would like it all public property to maintain well, but especially that this be treated as commercial property. The public property, if we're gonna issue any, um, variances, that they maintain their property as well. Thank you.
That was my only public speaker. Sorry about that, John. I did find your slip.
Good evening. Rose Askew, Traffic Manager for Economic and Strategic Opportunities. There's an item on the agenda that's being recommended for denial. Police Department and the Traffic Division is for the TOES. It's called TOES Performance. They are quite a few issues that the Police Department and Traffic are having with it and they are both here to speak on this item. For the last two years, the actual event was held illegally, um, on Beach Street. It's at 500 Beach Street. They've now submitted a request to close the street, to have vending on the street and to have parking on their property. However, with the issues, and there are some other things the Police Department and Traffic have that they're gonna talk about, they actually have a video for you all to watch to see exactly what they're talking about, um, to make sure that you all are aware before you all vote on this property.
All right, you wanna come up? They're gonna do it now?
Who's speaking? You said the applicants are here?
The applicants are here as well, yes. To my understanding, they said they were gonna fly down and be here at the meeting. I'm not sure if they filled out a request to speak if they're here.
I don't think so.
I don't see.
Are they here? I don't know.
I don't see anybody that I don't know here. I don't know them. We don't, well, you don't have to present, they're not here, they can, they can stay in New York. Okay. Thank you. Well, she just.
Okay, and I do have a motion and a second on this item.
We got a motion and a second? Is there anything we need to do to make sure that we're not doing anything we don't want to do, right? We following what the, what the police want, right?
Okay.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure, we following what they want. Okay, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
We're gonna move on to item 11B, which is Public Works RJ Group, 4244 Jackson Street, um, Public Works Complex Building Number Four. This is a resolution. A resolution approving the work authorization number nine to the continuing service contract with RJG, with RJ Group Inc., to replace the roof on building number four at the Public Works Complex at a cost, at a cost amount not to exceed $106,507 and providing an effective date.
We have a motion, we have a second.
And I don't have any speakers on this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second, no speakers? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
That was our last agenda item.
Thank you, Jesus.
And we start.
Okay. We start tonight with Commissioner Paris.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
On February 11th, the Volusia County Council is having a special meeting. They had, um, flood mitigation meeting, well, I guess it was more of a moratorium request, but they are gonna be coming back with three new, um, amendments to the Volusia County Comp Plan and Code of Ordinances. Um, one is gonna be for amending the comprehensive plan to include low-impact development goals, objectives and policies. The second is to amend Code of Ordinances, County of Volusia, to include low-impact development criteria. And the third is to amend the Code of Ordinances, uh, County of Volusia regarding storm water management permit review and storm water management performance review and design standards. My request is today to see if this is something that we could maybe ask staff to look at because maybe we already have these or if they have presented something that maybe we could incorporate also to help with our storm water management. I would like to get the rest of the commission to see if it's all right if staff could look into that to see if that's something that we could maybe implement too, if it's something that they feel that we need to or if it's a standard that we don't already have because we may already have it.
Okay.
Is, is that okay? Is everyone in agreements, agreeance with that?
I don't have any opposition, it's not something that I think we need to vote on. They can check it out.
Well, just something to bring back, just to look at. So if there's something that we could put in our comp plan too, to help, I would just like to see what our options are.
Well, that's the first step is for them to review that and I would say, and then talk with you and then they can bring it back.
On another thing for our comp plan, there is the economic element. Um, I briefly spoke to Dennis today about this, but, so this economic element in our comp plan is to retain and attract businesses that provide high-paying jobs. So, I don't know, I just felt that I'd bring it up now because I'm talking about comp plans. Can we ask, like, maybe Jeff to do, not maybe, I would like to ask Jeff to research higher paying jobs, maybe that we can piggyback off of, like, Embry-Riddle, all of the students we have here and something that we can incorporate on our Riverside. I, I think, I don't know what comp plan amendments need to be made until the research is done and what we could try to attract to bring this type of businesses there. So that was another thing, okay. And, um, I've been receiving a lot of calls lately and emails about fluoride in our water. I had met with staff on this and I learned a lot about fluoride that I never knew about before. But, because I think Daytona is so progressive and this is what I love about this city too, is that this actual residents, um, had a referendum in the 60s to include fluoride in the water. So after speaking to staff, I mean, it's a low cost and it's a minimal amount of fluoride that's actually put into our water system. And we put 2 point, 0.2 milligrams per liter. And, I mean, I think the most you could put is 0.7. Anyway, our Surgeon General, Joseph Ladapo, he has cited that he would like to remove fluoride, additional fluoride from the water because there is natural fluoride. And the effects, because there's adverse effects on children, so reduces their IQ, cognitive impairment, uh, ADHD, which is attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. So, another thing I found very interesting, so the FCA requires labels for fluoride that are, um, put into bottled water because they find fluoride to be considered a drug, I guess more of a man-made additive. So it needs to be clearly labeled to ensure consumers are aware of its presence and concentration. So I guess just more to let people know what's in the water. So I would like to know if anyone else has heard from their residents if they'd like to remove fluoride from the water, if I've been the only one. I mean, I've had this request in the past, but it wasn't as many, maybe one person, but now I have like a couple of people asking me about this. So is this something that the rest of the commission is interested in?
I had maybe one or two, two people at most, but I can't say at most, but I've had it over the years many, many, many times. And so it's not, not the first time, but it's not a, by any means, a, a substantial number of people. So minute number, and I wasn't aware of any, uh, giving me evidence that they were residents of Daytona Beach. I saw it as more activism, the correspondence that I received, they didn't make it a personal attempt.
No one else?
I don't have a appetite for that personally.
Okay. Next few things I'm really excited about, uh, so the FDOT is going to be having public participation for two projects. One is gonna be on Ridgewood, uh, from Bevel to Fairview. So, uh, that's gonna be on Wednesday, February 12th, from 5:30 to 7 at the News Journal Center, 221 North Beach Street. So I hope the public will come down, look to see what the project's about, give their input. And this will be scheduled, uh, work will be done next year. And the other FDOT meeting is for beachside residents. The work is gonna be doing, being done in the shores, but a block west is Daytona Beach. So I know a lot of residents have been waiting for, um, crossings at Seespray Street and also Browning Avenue. So that's gonna be taking place February 13th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Shores Community Center, 3000 Bellmead Drive in Daytona Beach shores. And last but not least, um, Daytona Beach Citizens Academy. It was one of the best things I did after becoming, uh, an elected official. So if anyone's out there that wants to know what the city, how it works, this is a great opportunity. It starts March 13th to May 7th and it's all, uh, for new attendees, so we want to give everybody a chance, but I highly recommend it. And, um, you could fill out the application online at daytonabeach.gov. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Commissioner Strick?
I, um, have noticed along Atlantic where they're improving the looks, uh, FDOT, I believe, they're, um, removing some of the crosswalks. I thought we were gonna get more. Uh, they've removed several of the, especially right in front of Bel Air Plaza where you, uh, cross over and make a U-turn, they've taken those out. Um, I'm not sure exactly what their end game is, it's probably too early to tell. But at some point, uh, we need to look at at least between East ISB and Seabreeze crosswalks on A1A because people just, tourists just walk right out across the street, cross the median and right out into the traffic and there's no crosswalks. Uh, there's less now, I think, and will be less when this is over with. I don't know, but we need to look at that because that's very unsafe in my opinion and that's probably not worth much. But, but, um, anyway, it, it's, it's, it needs to be looked at. I spoke with Andy about it and he said he would look into it, um, and he will get back with me. But, but at any rate, it's just something for us to keep in mind. I hope it looks good when they're through, but there's safety factors on crossing the street and being able to make turns and turn around and U-turns or whatever, so anyway. And I will use restraint of tongue for the rest of the evening, I hope.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on a lighter note, much lighter note. In December, the, uh, we supported the Halifax Historic Museum, they're downtown, I suggest you go and visit. They had a fantastic event and the commissioners, the city sponsored it. They just recently asked for another, um, little bit of support from us, they have another event coming up and we graciously agreed to it in our consent agenda. So each of us, and I think Commissioner Paris was with me on that particular day, um, has one of these coming to you from, it's very pleasant, it's very nice, it's a little memento from the Women's Army Corps. And I was hoping that our IT people could please show the video, um, that they put together for us, just showing us what happened at the event. I believe there's music. And so these were all, these were done just Christmas, actually. They did in black and white and these are people who work in the museum, they actually dressed up, it was very nice, they had over, over 100 people attend on a Saturday afternoon. But I really liked, um, the way they handled the historic approach, it's very authentic. Their next, uh, big project, I think, is going to have to deal with, um, indigenous peoples. And so they're planning something like that. And we have a huge historic fact of indigenous types of relics here and they're working toward it. But it was very nice. And so my request is that when I work with people and I give them money, we give them money, that they give me a video. I'd like for us to see where the money went, right? So some, um, mementos for you from the museum, except for Ms. Monica and myself, could you hand it around, please? And they're for the commissioners, I can get some more for, um, the city manager. That's number one. Number two is, um, I would very much like to invite, again, on a lighter note, I would like to invite some of the commissioners to join me, please, just one more. Um, okay, it's no longer a secret. I've been going to the Bethune-Cookman basketball games. I'm gonna say it publicly, I've been following them on ESPN and Big Ten and I have no idea what any of those things are, but I have learned how to click in and watch them. It's very, it's entertaining, it's exciting. I'm not a big basketball person, but I'm becoming one. I'm actually enjoying the game. And, uh, I would very much like to know if any of the commissioners would like to go sometime, especially Commissioner Reed. Um, I think we went to a football game once, I didn't know what I was watching, however, it was explained to me, the city manager's wife was there, she really gets into it. So, um, if any of you ever want to go, especially Commissioner Cantu, if you'd like to go sometime, I would love the company because I sit there by myself, I just sit and I, it's very exciting. It's a very exciting time for me, I quite enjoy it, right? I really, I, I do enjoy it. So that was, um, that was on a Saturday evening. On Friday evening, they had an alumni event, so I just want to say publicly, Bethune-Cookman is working very hard, the athletic department especially is working very hard to improve some of their facilities, um, on ISB. Um, I like the fact, have you noticed, they're changing the facade out front and they're improving one of the buildings, which I think will really enhance that corridor, given that we are also improving and buying some lots in the general area. So I appreciate the fact that they're improving the, the image of that ISB corridor, all right? So thank you so very much. And anybody who wants to attend, please let Letitia know, I would love to meet you there.
And thank you for supporting a great institution as well as the history museum, that's important. Thank you.
Commissioner May?
I will attend and I actually used to play basketball in school.
Okay, this is actually how I am, yay, I think that's super exciting, looking forward to it, good.
And I like basketball.
Me too, needless to say.
Because actually I can whip my husband at it too. Um, next, um, the next commission meeting, I'm gonna get a, I was gonna give an update on the, the LPGA, um, whining of that, but, because we did actually approve some more money at our last TPO, but I'm gonna wait to the next commission meeting and put it all together. Don't get excited, um, because it's still probably 2030, 2035 before we see anything happen. But we are getting closer, so I will give an update because I did, was watching the planning board meeting and I heard a few of them state they, they can't get the exact numbers or how much and everything, you know, that they've allotted to some of the projects. So I will give an update and that's about it and good night.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Henry?
I just want to say, Commissioner May, I would absolutely join you. Um, unlike you, I am a stapler to girls' basketball as I do have a daughter who pays college basketball up in North Carolina, she's the starting point guard up there.
I love it.
And, uh.
Tough job.
Dean's List with a 3.9 GPA, so yay, just throwing that in.
Student athlete, good, good.
Girls' basketball is good to see that so many people now are seeing, um, what I've always known about girls' basketball and how much it develops young ladies into women, um, not just on the court, but off the court and transferring it to real life. So that's just good to see that people are recognizing that now. Even when the, um, girls' basketball team from Atlantic came and you all, Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner Strickland showed them a lot of love, um, and I appreciated that as well because we want girls to know that we believe in them too, as far as, um, sports. Anyway, the second thing that I have is that on February 22nd, don't forget that we're having the Melanin Too Rich, um, Festival and it's going to be at the New Park, the Daisy Parking Start, the Daisy Stocking Park. There are gonna be live performances, panels, music, cultural and educational exhibits, free kids' games and activities, a talent showcase, health and wellness screenings, food trucks, vendors and a touch, a truck exhibit. That is going to be on February 22nd, 2025, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And, uh, come out, bring your family, bring the children and, and just enjoy the day. Enjoy that Saturday with us. Also, my last question is, the sidewalks in Derbyshire, are they all completed?
I see David Waller saying, no, not at all, not right now.
You see him saying no?
He, he's sitting in the back.
Oh, okay. Do you know how much, what all we have left? And they look amazing, by the way.
Where are they? Where, where in Derbyshire?
Oh, Brentwood is done. They put quite a few new ones on Third Street, is it? I think it's Third Street has got some new ones. And I just think some of those, we put some new ones in, and we put them in with the old ones. And I really do think we need some pressure washing over there with those.
Sidewalk project, and we've done a significant portion of it. We were waiting on a contract that has been executed so we can touch some signals. So we stopped short in a lot of areas in order to do the signal work. And that is under, we've given the work order to our signal contractor for that. They'll update some of the pet, pet crossing electronics, and then once that's done, then we can finish that project. We expect to finish it in this fiscal year, but we're not quite done yet.
Are there any more new ones going in? There are some, do you know?
Yeah, I think there, there's a few streets we haven't touched because we didn't want to bring the sidewalk down and terminate at a signal that wasn't compliant.
Okay.
I have to, I'd have to get you a breakdown. I have to look at what the plan was and then what's left still. Because I'm not, I don't know exactly every piece that's left, but I know we're not done.
Commissioner, could you, could you tell us how many parking spaces are in your new parking lot between Y and the Derbyshire football field?
We paved a section of the, you know, what was historically parking. For, really, it was more of a maintenance thing for us. And I, plus or minus, I think there's about 115 spaces.
Wow. That's great for the.
I think utilizing the same space, we'll get a lot more vehicles and then ordered, you know, faster, and people park better with stripes. And we're hoping that'll cut down some of the dirt bike activity that was in there, using that area in the evenings as well.
And also, my next question is, for those streets that have recently been paved, have we gone back and completed all the yellow lines in the, in the zone?
I'd have to check specifically. Typically, we go, we put paint down first, and then sometime within the year after they're paved, we go back and do the thermal markings. It just depends on contractor's schedule and how quick to get back out there. And we've done a lot of paving in that area, so I don't know if we've all hit that first year, so to speak, but it is a follow-up first, and then we do the thermal with reflectors later.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my questions, that's the end of my questions for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. You looking that way, you going to skip me?
No, I just, I just looked over that way before I took in the whole room.
All right.
Going to skip you.
Well, I want to say I am enjoying the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. Now, I was really sore last week, but I'm all right today, although I almost couldn't walk last night.
A lot of squats, a lot of leg lunges.
Yes, Lord. But for those of us that are participating, and there's a lot of staff out there as well, and I'm loving the themes that they've added this year. This is a Super Bowl week. We had to do something football-related. This evening, you all approved the $1,000 that I allocated for the book vending machine that I, I purchased for Tirti Small. I didn't realize the machines didn't come with books. And when I learned that, they were unveiling their book on Friday, and we were able to expedite getting books to be in the machine. And you should have seen those children. Not only did they dedicate the media center to Betty Powers, which is really sweet. She was totally caught off guard, off guard. Her family was there and everything. She thought she was coming to read to children because it was the end of like a re. Literacy Week. It was the end of Literacy Week. So she came to read to the children, and little did she know, they were dedicating the media center to her, and they unveiled the book vending machine. So it was really, really nice. Midtown concerts kicked off on a cool night. And yes, I was there, me and about 20 people. But we had our line dancing, and we stayed till the end. And I just want to tell you all, the fourth Saturday of every month is when we're going to have our midtown concerts. And there's one following the Melanin Concert on the 22nd. There's a concert in the park, so it's a full day of activities on the 22nd. And also on the 22nd, that's the last day of the Book Fresh Festival, or Fresh Book Festival. So there are several things that are happening. This Friday, it may be too late to register, but the Volusia League of Cities is offering a free ethics course to local, you know, we're required to do an ethics training every year. So if you wanted to do it live, it's Friday at the Deltona Center in Deltona, because we don't have a Daytona Center yet. We've gone to like Daytona State when it's been in Daytona. But anyhow, I'll be taking that course because sometimes I usually take it when we go to the Florida League of Cities Conference. But I, I'd like to kind of get it out the way since it's on a Friday. And then on tomorrow, we have such a rich history of phenomenal African-Americans who have touched this city. And once again, MCDC is going to present their banner presentation of African-Americans. And I just want to share some of the names of some of these people with you. Phenomenal folks. One of our very own employees, Mikel Brown. We named the center behind the Dickerson Center after him. He worked with us for years and had an untimely demise before he retired. And he did a lot of painting and construction of our buildings. So Mikel Brown. Larry Ruth James Hyde, my sorrow and link sister, was known for being a media specialist for ages for folks growing up. Charles Wesley Moore, football coach, and Reggie Moore, and, and Dr., oh, help me. Thank you. Dr. Richard V. Moore, past president. His son had been the football coach for Bethune-Cookman. Dr. Rebecca Walker Steele, director of the Concert Corral that we stole from FAMU. Oh, yeah. Dr. Samuel Butts, who we have a park named after. Some of these folks I didn't really know. Harry Burney, renowned vocalist, and his father was a principal and his mother was a nurse. Patricia Hamilton-Hurd. We haven't heard that voice in a year. So she is at the corner of MLK and International Speedway, where the insurance company is. I saw the band. They're already up. They're already up. This is being dedicated tomorrow, and families will speak tomorrow. And then Althea Beatrice Cato Lucas, I believe that's Mr. Lucas's mom. So some phenomenal people. So if you're free tomorrow at noon at the Center for Civic Engagement at the great Bethune-Cookman University, we're going to be recognizing those families and acknowledging those banners as a presentation tomorrow. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Some good work. On Saturday at 6 o'clock at the Daytona Beach Hilton, will be the annual Mayor's Gala to benefit the First Step Shelter. And we are, looks like we are in line to approach or exceed what we've made in the past, which is quite an accomplishment in these times. So we're closing in on a quarter of a million dollars. If we can do the match, we have a silent match of $50,000. So on the evening of, hopefully, we can get people to donate, and we'll approach that today. Waste Pro called at the last minute and joined us as a sponsor at the gold level of $5,000. So we're appreciative of that call and so many others that will, we will celebrate and honor on Saturday night. So for those of you who are out there, please join us. It's not too late to get a ticket, if not find a table, or don't tell anybody I told you, but crash the party. No, seriously, we're all, always happy to have, have, we'll have over 400 people. Will be there. We paid, paid folks, so it should be a good time. As Commissioner Reed mentioned, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge is going well. I was watching a video today that was sent to me by, I believe, Mr. Ruby, about a city who lost, and I didn't get to finish watching it. How many, how many pounds was that? A million pounds. And I sort of am, sort of inspired and going to really watch that because I would like to see us take a broader look at how we, as a community, can focus on our health even more. Very excited about the number of staff members that we see who are at the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. Believe me, when Commissioner Reed says that it is a good time, it's a good time. It's very healthy, very wholesome, the music, the vibe. You know, I didn't know this, but they say, one of the, someone said this during the challenge, "The best way to beat depression is to dance." So there is a lot of dancing, which I don't do very well. But, you know, I try on occasion when nobody's watching. But nonetheless, there's a lot of dancing, just a lot of movement, a lot of, a lot of leg work. The strongest, most important part of your body typically, especially as we age, are the legs. We want to keep those strong, doing a lot of squats and lunges, et cetera. And we're encouraging folks, again, to continue to, to, to do all that you can to eat well. I am 28 days strong without any bagged, processed sugar. And he put this up here, and I yelled at him. I said, I sat down, I said, "Get that away from me." But I'm, I'm, I'm getting stronger, you all. I mean, it's not as difficult as it was. You know, normally, when I go out to, go to eat, or if I go to one of these celebrations where they give us their chicken, I just skip the chicken and eat the dessert. Not right now. So we're encouraging everyone to, you know, take something out of your diet, do something as it relates to diet, and get a couple extra days of wellness in. Very excited about the sidewalks, the paid parking. And I think, you know, you all, as a commission, you know, sometimes you don't realize all of what you're doing, but that is something that you have supported, you know, over the years. And this has not been a new thing. We've been doing that, you know, I know since I've been mayor. We were at $2 million, and we've, we're over four, you know, headed for five, you know, per year. And that is making a difference, and we're able to do a lot of things in our infrastructure that will set us up for the future. You know, I grew up in that Derbyshire Park, and it has never had that look. You know, I grew up going to Daisy Stocking, and look at the difference in Daisy Stocking. Look at the difference in the Dickerson Center. You know, look at the difference in Henry Lee or Harlem Park. Just look at your parks. They are looking a lot better. So let's continue to, you know, that's Joe Harris's Harlem. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I'm old. Still call it Harlem. So again, thank you all for the commitment to those things. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, um, yes, two, two things. I just want to say, applaud the work of the Parks and Rec Department that has made it a, made a decision to offer the Autistic Safety Swim Week for individuals who have, who are autistic, to get free swimming lessons. These are things that are taking place. And also, another employee is offering things, and I think they're going to be offering different languages as they go along. So to see the, the Parks and Rec staff putting these type programs together are pretty good. So I would encourage you to take advantage of reading the city manager's update with that information. Also, we wanted to get some clarity in reference to our legislative priorities. There are conversations that are taking place, and Hardy has been working with our lobbyists on different items. And the three primary items we put forward, one really is, is of concern because we don't have any plans for it. But to pursue both appropriations requests and grant funding for backup generators, those are things that we think should still be on there. We had one of the items, was the Public Works Building Project. It does not meet the appropriations process criteria because it is not shovel-ready, which we have as a priority. Revised priority to ask for a change and allow expenditure of P and L funds to request that, they ask for approval for one-time-use funds for flooding-related projects or for it to be for any infrastructure projects. And add appropriations requests for funding for police department gun range. This will require a 50%, 50% match. These are items that went forward from different elected officials or from different members of the community, and we wanted to make sure that we keep clarity on what our top priorities were and bring forward to you about the Public Works Building. Because it's not shovel-ready, it will not meet. And if, if Hardy, you want to come up to make sure I'm saying it right, it does not meet the criteria to even get funding based off of what he's heard with our lobbyists.
Mayor, before he speaks, can I say something, please?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just so you're aware, I don't think any of your bills are going through, but the permit and licensing fee that were $11 million, you can expect that to probably be out this week and, actually, maybe tomorrow, hopefully, or Friday. That bill is being amended so we can actually be able to purchase our lift sta, I mean, our generators for our lift stations, to use that money for that, that we asked the state for. And so I'm assuming Senator Leake, like I said, will have it out with the next few days. And I lobbied that and for the House bill as well. And like I said, it should be out this week. And I'm not sure it's in drafting, how much, I mean, how they're going to award it because legal is looking at it. So for, you know, storm-related and flooding. So we should be able to have enough to purchase all lift stations and our priority list. And I don't know, did you put the bills in for the lift stations?
It's not time yet. That'll be next week. We do that next week.
Okay. And of course, you know what Senator Leake said?
Yes.
Right. So, but we should be able to with our permit and licensing fee because I lobbied, and he actually stated that he was doing the bill for me.
So Mayor's members of the commission, I almost feel like I want to fill out a public comment form so I can talk basketball after the meeting. Sorry, can't resist. Just on the, I'll, I'll come back to that. Let me do the Public Works. Part of the process that you go through in an appropriations request, the forum asks you upfront, is the project shovel-ready? In other words, it's designed, is all the paperwork is done? We know how much to call, all those kind of things. The answer is no for this project. So it, it, it's, sounds like a good idea, that it's just not ready at this point in time. So what I felt the responsible thing to do would be come back to the commission and let you know, because I didn't want to just not do what you're expecting to be done. So just clarity that, that you understand that, and that's an acceptable non-action, if that's right, a non-action on that priority, if that's okay.
It's not, it's not even happening.
So, okay. Now, on the, on the P and L.
So are you all requesting, since you all voted on that as a priority, to remove that? Yeah.
All right. All right, thank you. On, on the P and L flooding, what would be, what the ask of the commission would be to, and I think the last meeting, you said you were in agreement for following up on that. But officially, if you would adopt that, that language as a priority so that as this goes forward, number one, the bill as it goes forward.
I'm a little confused. We're adopting the generators as a priority?
No, no, I'm not on the generators. I'm on the, the, the P and L money.
Okay, that is already a done deal. We don't even have to adopt it. It's going to be a state law for the entire state.
Then, then if.
Can somebody explain what's going on? I'm very confused.
So, okay, so Hardy can tell you. He went in front of Senator Leake, and I'm sure everybody can go to Florida, Florida Channel and actually watch it. And Senator Leake pretty much said, "You're coming here asking for money, and you're not spending, we're not spending money correctly." And he mentioned our audit that we've been in for over four years. And so I actually went to him because our residents need backup generators. And, and asked him, I said, "Hey, we have that $11 million. You can only spend that money a certain way by state law." I said, "Our residents are your residents." And I said, "I know we're not going to get, as Hardy said, we're going to put a bill in. It's going to be denied anyway. If we could help the residents..." Um, if we could help the residents by using that money, putting in a one-time thing and that, and mending that law where we can use it for storm related or flooding issues. And actually, he liked it. We already have the money. So he said, we're going to need someone to put it on the House side. And I said, I already took care of that. So actually that bill should be out this week and it will be a state law for the entire state. So actually, I don't think we need to do anything. It is one of our priorities, our generators, our residents. I mean, we need those for our lift stations. So we will be able to most likely use it. We just have to wait for the, I mean, it's in, um, um, what is it called?
Bill drafting.
Thank you. Think of the word. And drafting right now. So it will be out and then we can read it and see exactly what they put in there for us.
So all the money is going to go towards generators?
I don't know, whatever the law is.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, if I'm, if...
Getting clarification.
But we are 76.
Right.
We'll take that. At least we, we get that from them and we'll take it.
Mayor.
Commissioner Hoop?
May I?
Yes.
Wasn't that the one item you wanted to take off the request to use the P and L funds for a different item?
Absolutely, and that's why...
And you argued about it and now you're saying that after we voted for, you, okay, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Paris, yes, I did. Because we're in an audit, that's why Senator Leake went after the city from the audit and the P and L. Yes.
Okay, but as a group, but we decided we wanted to do that and you said, no, we have to remove it.
Correct.
And now you're saying that you went back and you, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
That's what I'm trying to say, yes. I went back to him and explained to him. I said, these residents are your residents as well. I know that the state is not going to give us any money, but our residents actually need things.
So we could agree that we all decided on that, but I just want to thank you. I just want to clarify because at first you said you didn't want to do that.
I didn't want to do it because that's why you were called out on it.
Well, I think that was after.
And this is not going to be something, it's a one-time thing.
Okay, and what were the other items on that list? Cause I heard something else about a gun range that I don't know about that either.
Well, let me, Mayor, if I, if I may, um...
All right, go ahead.
The, on the, the P and L money question, um, so what the commission adopted, um, was, we didn't, it's not an appropriations request, we just said, please support legislation. So pretty much a very general statement of please support legislation that would allow the use of P and L, uh, funds for growth-related infrastructure. Okay, that, that's what you said. It, where we're moving to is what I would consider, uh, amending your priority so that it reads, uh, one-time use. That's what I understand Senator Leake is supporting. One-time use, use it one time forever and that's it, um, for flooding, specifically related to flooding.
Okay, have you read, have you read?
I haven't seen it.
Okay, and have you talked to Senator Leake?
I haven't, but our lobbyist has.
So actually I should, I would wait till the bill comes out because you're saying flooding. I'm hearing storm related as well. So I think you should come back to us after that bill comes out and make sure we are reading it correctly. Because I have actually talked to Michael, his aide, and I've talked to Leake and I have talked to the House representative.
Understand.
They have, actually, they, actually, one called me on Sunday. So I think we need to wait and see exactly what the language says before we adopt something that we'll be adopting and we can't do anything with it.
Understand.
Well, we will still be able to do something with it, whatever they vote on.
Right, but it, but we're saying infrastructure, it could be something about flooding, it could be just storm related. I think we need to wait and see what they do because I haven't actually read it either. I just know it's, I, what I've asked and he's agreed, but I don't know when it's in staffing and legal, what they actually put in there.
And I think...
I just want to go on record as saying that the reason, from my perspective, that, uh, we don't get any money has nothing, in my opinion, to do with, uh, as he said, how we manage funds or anything of that nature. I don't believe that. So I just don't want to keep hearing that. I can't take that anymore. It's just untrue. And if, if need be, I'll, I'll tell him why, what I think it is. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we're, we're under the gun, I'm not disagreeing with you, under, we're under the gun. Next week is our week to finalize appropriation request forms. The P and L money is not involved in that. So when that language gets finalized, um, we can come back obviously to the commission. Uh, you can decide if you support it, adopt it as a priority. Um, then, um, in the process, you get credit for a public hearing, that's part of the process. Um, and the delegation knows the commission has adopted this as a priority. So there, I don't have any issues. I have enough, no complaints. Um, the other item was there has been discussion about, um, an appropriations request for a, uh, gun range for the police department. Um, as I understand, uh, the, the, uh, it would be shovel ready. Um, ballpark, I'm understanding about, uh, 100, about a million five, something like that. And then, so the 50% match for the city, 750,000. Um, and so, um, if that meets with the approval, um, of the commission to add as a priority, we would immediately start the form filling out, getting sponsors and, uh, and some of that conversation I know has been, has already been going on. So I, we just need direction about that as a priority.
I've heard the talk in Tallahassee about it. Um, actually, our police department does need a gun range because they have to use, they absolutely do. And I've heard the talk and if they are going to approve that, I think it's something we shouldn't...
We can't not do it.
Yeah, should not do, absolutely.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Then I, um, then we need a motion to like, that's an official action.
I, I think you should.
You want a, you want a motion?
I would like to make the motion to pursue, pursue the gun range for the police department, yes.
All right, we have one motion, we have a second. All right, we have any questions or comments? Any public comments? All right, got a motion, got a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
And just some good news from a strategic standpoint on the, um, generator, uh, backup generators. So, um, this would give us a third option and we'll take, we'll run, we'll run all three of them. So, an appropriations request, so we'll run that. Um, Senator Leake did share at the delegation meeting that there is, uh, grant funding, a fund that has been established for these types of projects so that they don't have to go through the appropriations process. So we're going to run that one too. And when this language, um, gets finalized, we'll run all three of them. Um, and just go after it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing? Okay, all right, uh, we'll hear from the residents of Daytona Beach.
Okay, my first speaker is John Sanchez and on deck is Edna Fordham.
Hey, John.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I'm Johnny Sanchez doing business at John's Rock and Ride, 817B, and just recently occupied 817A Main Street. As you know, I've been on Main Street almost since the eighties. And, um, to the suggestion of Ms. Rose Askin, to speak to you folks. And because of my negligence and lack of attention to city procedures, I'm not on the vendor's list for Bike Week, which obviously we need it really bad. So I'm coming here to apologize for my, my lack of attention and maybe with your help to get put into the list so that this acquaintance could help me, uh, proceed from there. And that's why I'm here, folks.
Where's, where's Ms. Rose? What do we have to do and what, what's the problem? You just failed to fill out the application?
She handles the list from what I understand.
She does, but what didn't you do and what do we have to do?
Well, she just told me to come to this meeting and maybe my commissioners in my area or someone could help me get on the list for, for the event.
Yep, can you help us?
Jeff Brown, Economic and Strategic Opportunities Director. The gentleman contacted us, uh, either late last week or early this week, um, indicating that he is now wanting to be part of Bike Week and have vendors, um, in the store next door to him. Um, we had already brought that up, that, that issue to you all at the last commission meeting. So therefore, the only way for us to be able to move forward with it was for approval by this commission.
Is the other part of his business open for Bike Week?
Yes, ma'am, yes. It's, he has a BTR and is open year round.
So he's asking the part that he said he just recently bought to now be a part of it? Is that how it goes, Rose?
I don't know, Rose.
I thought she had left.
Good evening again, Rose Askew, project manager. I met with this gentleman a couple of days ago. He wanted to, he has a business with a license. There was a business next door to him that closed, that's no longer open and operating. He is now paying the rent to the property owner for that one as well. So he's now asking to be able to have vendors indoors for that one and a hot dog cart on the outside of that same building to be able to do vending for Bike Week and Biketoberfest. But there's been no application. He would be a new person participating. And to my understanding, in meeting with him, he was not aware of what the process was. So he came, but because it's already been approved by the commission after the deadline and everything, he has to, our understanding is he has to request it from you all to be able to participate.
Um, Ms. Askew, if he would have met the deadline, he would have been approved for the, to be able to participate in the master plan?
That is correct for outside, but you all would have had to give him special approval for indoor because right now the current guidelines don't allow indoor vending.
Okay, so are the current guidelines that does not allow for inside vending for this particular area?
For any area.
Any area.
Yeah.
So the commission, no matter what, they would have, he would have still had to come. If you're saying if he applied prior to the deadline, he still would have had to get approval?
Right.
For, from the commission, okay.
He would have been on that list of special approvals to allow indoor vending as well as outside vending.
And, and, and we have individuals that have that special approval?
Yes, sir, we do.
Well, I said, the outside vending was really not going to be, we were going to put the hot dog truck in the doorway of the, of the location, but not, it's not proceeding into the sidewalk, just right at the entrance, where's an old New York style hot dog truck, very small. And then of course I have my leather and sewer inside also, so it's two vendors, inside, not outside.
Johnny, how long you been down there? Since when? Since the eighties? How long have you been down, down there?
I've been here since the eighties, sir. An all long time. I'm, I'm right now, right now, the oldest American-born Vietnam vet biker vendor on Main Street. And just my lack of attention to the procedures, because remember, this new, this is new for me, or as far as getting vendors in that empty store, because I, I acquired it very recently from the landlord, from the Donovan family.
Okay.
So, that's...
I, I, what's, what's the, what, what's the, uh, position of my colleagues? I'm in favor, you all know I'm going to be in favor. So what is the position of others? You know, I'm going to say, uh, yes. Man been down there 40 years and take, took over a next door business. Anybody have any opposition?
How recently did he take over the new business?
I'm sorry, what?
How recently did you purchase the other business?
It's not a business, it's just a vacant storefront.
It's a vacant storefront.
Okay.
Johnny.
Johnny, when, when did you purchase the other building?
He's leasing it sort of.
No, I didn't purchase it, it belongs to the landlord.
So when did you start leasing it?
Uh, a little over a year ago, when, so I, I had vendors in there, maybe two events, but this whole thing of being on this list was new, we didn't have that then, I guess. So that's why I'm stuck.
Yeah, we, we always had it, um, but you did not go through the process. Um, so, so what he's asking commissioners, do you support him being able to go through the proper channels, even though it's delayed to open up that space for Bike Week for the vending?
Are there any code violations? Anything outstanding?
It currently has not been reviewed for anything, so we don't know if he has any outstanding violations or anything.
But if you all approve this, that Rose will go through the process to see if there is any violations to allow for that to happen.
Correct.
Sir, sir, Johnny, is your business opened every day?
Yes, I am one of the very few stores on Main Street that is open. 90% of it is closed year round. So it's hard for us to make a living with so many empty stores. So when I acquired this one, I'd been paying my rent, because I was going to have an art gallery there, which I reneged, so I've just been bringing vendors in for the event, like everyone else, which really I'd like to get out from under that with the landlord. But for right now, I really need those vendors in there, the hot dog man and maybe my leather person to basically help me pay the rent and occupy it.
So I'm curious, all this time you have had vendors in there, but you have never gone through our process?
There were two vendors before. They, they just came to the city, got their $600 permit and they were in.
But they had to, one second, one second, but they had to pay you a fee, correct? They had to pay you a fee to use the space?
To, to be inside?
Yes.
Yes.
And so now you understand what about that? What else has to happen? Now I'm just curious. So for how many seasons have you done this? How many seasons have you had vendors that, leasing, for how many seasons?
You've been leasing?
You've been leasing the property for one year.
Uh, yes, about that long, yes.
And in that time, you've had two events, correct?
Two events.
And in the two events, you have not, um, gone through our process at all?
Yeah, I didn't think that that was necessarily for me because the vendors did it themselves. So when the vendors came and came to the city, they found out, or I found, that they needed to be on this list. And this is where the situation I'm at.
You just don't know. Y'all let them, let them go through with it.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Can we, we need a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All right.
And then you need a...
Public comment? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. You got to go through, work with her and, and help them, see what we can get done. And then Johnny?
That goes to you now.
Yes.
Then, then we got to try to get something in there year round.
And believe me, this won't happen again, guys. I, I just sometimes lack in the hope.
We're not beating up on you, brother.
Yeah? Thank you, man.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
You're good.
There's a point of reference. Take a drive down Main Street.
I do.
Take a look at the shops. I encourage you to take a look at what is in the storefronts directly on Main Street. That's all I'm going to say.
I agree, I, I know.
No, specifically, take a look at this location and take a look at what you see in the storefronts.
His location?
Specifically, yes. I would not generally say that, but specifically do that.
I will do that.
Okay.
I know Johnny, but I wouldn't.
Our next speaker is Edna Fordham and on deck is Pierre Lewis.
Probably. What's she saying?
Okay, I've made copies for everyone, just so you can hear me. I'm going to read this quickly. Um, honorable Mayor Henry, commissioners and esteemed members of our community, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I come to, I come before you with a serious concern that directly impacts public trust, transparency and the integrity of law enforcement operations in our city. Based on my direct knowledge, there has been an ongoing pattern in practice since at least 2018, based on personal cases or incident reports that I have filed with the city of Daytona Beach. And this has been going, I suspect likely a decade or more, of deliberately misclassifying criminal cases within the Daytona Beach Police Department. This practice involves using codes such as 999, non-reportable, to cover up valid incident reports which are legally... to cover up valid incident reports which are legally sufficient and satisfies the definition of a criminal report, um, report. By engaging in this practice, they are effectively underreporting crime and misrepresenting the true state of public safety in our community. This issue spans multiple administrations, including those of former chiefs Mike Chipwood, Craig Capri and the current chief, Jacary Young. The implication of these practices are profound. Number one, it distorts crime data, misleading residents, city officials and even federal and state agencies. It impacts resource allocation. If crime is underreported, necessary funding and personnel may not be properly allocated to address public safety concerns. It denies justice to victims. Cases that should be properly documented and investigated may be overlooked and dismissed due to manipulation of classification codes, which happened in my instance. It erodes public trust. Citizens rely on transparent and accurate reporting from law enforcement and in any effort to conceal or misrepresent crime data is a betrayal of that trust. For these reasons, I am formally requesting that the city commission authorize an independent external audit of the police department crime classification and reporting practice from at least 2018 to the present with a broader review of data to determine if these issues extend further back. This audit should. Okay, well, you, you have the written context and I'm also making the public aware that if they have experienced a similar situation as mine, that they should report their concerns to Ms. Erica Gaines at the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pierre Lewis and on deck is John Nicholson.
Good evening, Pierre Lewis, 130 South Franco Street. It's interesting, we were talking about cybersecurity. I don't know if you've seen my tagline on my email that says cybersecurity instructor. So I thought it was quite interesting to hear that comment. I didn't come to talk about that, I actually come to talk about fencing. But I had just my quick comments as a person that is considered a certified echo hacker. When we look at stuff, we're really not looking at one individual, just so you know, as you write those plans. It's about the data. It's about who owns the data once that device gets on a network somewhere. And those are things, right, I said three minutes. And those are things that we know we talk about in the cybersecurity world and also in the certified hacking world. So when someone says about their device, it's there, it's that part. But either way, another thing I actually came to talk about was not about that because I could be all night on that one. One, I haven't been to the meeting for a while because I'm, I'm Wednesday nights, I volunteer at the prison. I'm mentoring the prisoners at Tamoca Correctional. So there's a lot to be said about prison reform and them that are there. Every Wednesday night, we do classes on leadership and communications. I was thinking about two minutes. So my two minutes of what I really wanted to address was the fact that last year I woke up to somebody sleeping in my backyard. And I noticed in the front grass that was around it, there was something called Narcan. I'm so green that that stuff, I thought it was Afrin. I was going to pick it up until the nurse said, no, you don't put that in your nose. I was a Cub Scout, but anyway, either way, what I did was I talked to, at the Midtown Redevelopment Board, explained to them, they said I could get a fence. I was going to put a fence in my yard. When I got ready to put the requirements in for the fence, AAA said that the fence had to have a 20 foot setback in the entry part. I said, okay, I put it in there, but then I said, what's the requirement? They mentioned to me, it says Daytona Beach is the only one that has that requirement. They installed thousands of fences all over and nobody has a 20 foot setback. I said, why is that? I called, they told me to call permits and licensing. I did that, well, I talked to Sarah Kurt. She mentioned that, I talked to them and they said, well, it's required because of the land development code. When someone says something is required, normally what I'll do is I'll look it up and see what it's at. As I begin to look it up, it doesn't exist there. Then what happened was when I talked to the lady there, she mentioned to me, she says, well, you've got to be in the business of. I know what that means. Either way, I said, okay, well, what we'll do is see if we can find out further. They waited a whole month to get back to me and then another month after that. When it took that long to find one line, I got that one sheet of paper that they gave me, I sent it to my commissioner, she took a look at it. She mentioned to me, it's the same thing, I was aghast because it mostly refers to commercial, refers to ATM sheet that said, this is a house. They said, well, it's for stacking. Nobody's got a stack. So I'll close with this, I said, nobody's got a stack going in my yard? Because the question I mentioned to them is, if my car is there, and let's say for instance, I've not paused at all and I have an electric gate. It removes the part when they're saying we're stacking. And guess what, the phone went dead. So that tells me, all I'm asking for in this conversation is that the commission will look at that. I sent you the email on there, review that and get some clarification. I think it's ugly for one thing, and the other thing is they said at 24, 20 feet back in my property, those vegans, those undesires are still going to be sitting there. And that's our comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Before the next person comes, I asked him to come and present this to us because he lives just a few blocks down the street from me. And 20 feet on his property, the gate will be at his front door, at his porch. And so I really wish we would look at this because this is a very old aged neighborhood. My house is born, built in 1955. What year was your house built, do you know?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. And so to take that yardage away from them saying that we're stacking and people can't go around us, he's right, it's, it's indicating businesses because you don't want a truck to stop in the middle of the street and cars got to go around it and perhaps impede the traffic that's going in the opposite direction. So he's saying that if we would look at that, to please consider the fact that his gate has been where it's been, he just wants to replace the gate, that's all he's asking. And if, if this body doesn't look at it, then he's going to have to be compelled to go and ask for a variance. So please give that some consideration, Mr. Manager, if you could have staff to look at it. In fact, Mr., I mentioned it because he'd already spoken to me, to Mr. Morris, and he said he was going to have something tonight, but I haven't seen him.
He, he's here, but I have not seen all of the documents that he says he has.
Okay.
And so I think that it's appropriate that not only Mr. Morris looks at it by himself, but the building officials and the planning staff as well, because it makes sure that we're all on the same page.
Very good.
So basically, he already got a fence and he can't replace that fence and got to back up further because we need to fix that.
Exactly.
That's pathetic. Okay, whatever y'all have to do. All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Sorry, Mayor, everybody else has one but you.
What, what is, oh, you don't, you don't?
You weren't here, so I spoke to them. Somebody was nice enough to give me for Christmas a copy of the E-zone. All right, it took me a month or so to go through it. And I realized that we've never okayed the E-zone.
No.
But the, if you look at it, the front page, the top portion, okay, shows the E-zone and how much has already been completed. There are nine buildings there already finished. So I know we never adopted it, but it's almost half finished. The second part, the bottom section, is a yellow copy, which is activities that are occurring. Of those six sections down there, five have been talked about within the last year of completion. So we've already talked, if you look at the second page, item three, ISB has already been done, mostly. A1A is being started as we speak. The Corbin building is almost leased. Senior Frog is going through the process, it's soon to be built. We talked about the pier, Ken mentioned it in the last meeting. The Ocean Center is going through updates. All the buildings that were originally built, they're redoing them all, all right? The roof, the whole nine color scheme. The homes in the area have increased in value tremendously. For a slum, a million dollar home is not necessarily in a slum. Within the property that we just put out for RFP, there have been five new houses built in the last two years. There's Enchil. If we're going to do something for Main Street, now's the time to do it. Corbin and all the other properties are in the process. Within the last year, Teresa Dome sold 30 of her properties. She wasn't going to do anything with them. Gonzales de Tamoca has deep pockets. There's synergy. Considering that the top half is already done, the middle section is being done, we've talked about redoing Main Street. After we do the extension of North Beach Street, we're talking about redoing Main Street. With all of this going on at the same time, it is an ideal time to spend looking at Main Street, looking at what we can do, because the synergy is there. Once you start doing something, if we work on the pier, it's a very, very visual entity. Everybody, all of our tourists are going to know that, all right? If Corbin gets rented and they do what they're supposed to do, that's going to change the ballpark. Things are going to start to happen. What I'm asking you to, is to look at this and look at the E-zone about putting it into practice.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Thomas Russell.
Good evening, Frederick Brown, 159 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Try to keep up with Whispering John. Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to say it was a real pleasure to see you at the county mission, commission meeting, council meeting, I'm sorry, on the other side of the three minute clock.
They didn't, they didn't put the clock on me.
But you know what I'm saying?
I do.
You know, and some of their meetings are, are real marathons. And this one was moving so smoothly, I was very impressed until we got bogged down on a quagmire on cybersecurity issue. I certainly understand both sides of that question. And I will say, since I do have the platform briefly, if you believe that Microsoft 365 is going to save you from any threats, you're sadly mistaken. Also, I know our cyber guy here is very aware of the coming of AI. I have personally been a victim of it myself through NASCAR. The funds were hijacked from there and all the information that's been dumped on the dark web from the data broker breach last fall, that all came to fruition in August. So those of you who believe that cybersecurity is what it was years ago, it's not. And it's going to get a lot worse and you need to be, show due diligence. I think that our cyber guy did a really good job presenting it and some of the costs you could be looking at. But yes, it can jump from email to the system through various routes. So we do have to be aware. As usual, I want to talk about flooding, there's several events coming up. I was at the community meeting with Cobb Cole on the properties there at the 12, 1299 project and also the, you know, the 1201, that whole area. I talked with them and they did seem to show a great deal of interest, the developer, on the Dunes of Cat Lake that I've been talking about endlessly for several years now. I presented this information, I've talked to the county. I know the city manager, who's not here right now, has personally challenged me in this and I'm picking up the gauntlet and I'm running with it. It's the way to make Daytona Beach the most beautiful beach as well as the most famous beach. And it will be something to give us, and I know John has spoken to how much he wants to see five stars, I do too. But it's not going to be much of a beach resort without a beach. We have to take this seriously, we have to take the bull and run with it. Pedestrian safety, there's a meeting coming up also. I know Commissioner Paris has kept me informed on the various meetings. I do encourage everybody to get involved in both the beach meetings on the 25th of February at the Ocean Center. It's also going to be down at the Daytona Beach Shores Community Room. So I encourage people to get out to that and get involved in the DOT pedestrian safety meeting on the 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Russell and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Thomas Russell, 603 North Beach Street. Veteran known as the one man representative of the Boulder Road CRA, which seems to be bleeding money. I ask each of you to take a look sometime, because I asked Commissioner Strickland, Eric Fletcher and Mr. Thomas to account for me so that I could understand what the money was being spent on. Bottom line, I just roughly added them all up. Of all the money, 1.2 million dollars. The expenses that were paid out, TIF payments. Everybody knows them, I learned what they were, but everybody knows what they are. Hundred and eighty-one thousand. I don't question that. Grants, nineteen thousand. I don't question that. But isn't the CRA supposed to spend money to develop the area? The CRA is controlled by the mayor and the commissioners. Certainly you know that this money, which amounts to, you have to laugh. Nine, twenty thousand in grants, hundred and eighty-one thousand in TIFs. Gives you 200,000. The other 1 million dollars has been paid on miscellaneous expenses, payroll, health insurance. You guys are responsible for this. How can you let this happen? I see you okay a $1,000 payment for an event. You have to vote on it. But here we have, and it's just shocked the heck out of me, out of $230,000, all but 200,000 is accessories, payroll, cars, telephone, all right? You're, you're responsible for this money. You're the ones that voted to okay the budget. I'm sure Mr. Thomas does what he can do. But you have to see to it that this money is spent for what it was intended. And the fudging the payroll, and that's what it's doing, or other expenses, is being fudged. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, it's your responsibility to see to it that that money is spent appropriately. And that would be to do repairs on sidewalks by property. We had a meeting not too long ago. Property's expensive, well, heck, there's a million dollars right there in five years. You'd have bought a lot of lots for a million dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I totally agree with you. I have looked at that area, it doesn't make any sense to me either.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck, is it Tijuana Doza?
Doza's here and saying.
Okay, you have to, if you're going to speak separately, you have to fill out a separate speaker sheet, you can't. You only get three minutes, so. Okay. Yeah, you'll both have to speak in those three minutes.
All right, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. So the city involved was Oklahoma City, they lost a million pounds. They did some exercise programs, but they also changed the way they handled infrastructure. They changed their city's infrastructure to not be so car dependent, to put in some good mass transit, to encourage people to walk. So you know what's coming out of my mouth next? Trolley. If we could get a trolley, it would help our citizens lose weight because they could walk over from the beach side, take the trolley home or whatever. So I, you know, it's, it is a great concept, but it, and it also speaks to what some of the residents in LPGA were saying in Planning Board, that we need to make, increase our road capacity. But there isn't an infinite amount of road capacity that we can build. At some point, we have to start thinking about how we are going to move people without cars. And that means as you build up the west side and you look at the road capacity out there, think about how you're going to put light rail out there. I mean, everybody's going to say, oh, that's ridiculous, nobody will use it. But at some point, we cannot build enough roads for all the cars we're going to have. So it's something that forward planning would be good. Okay. Second thing. I went to, the Waste Pro has a garbage truck museum in Sanford. It's phenomenal. There's like, right now they have 30 or 40 garbage trucks in there, starting from 1922, going all the way up to the current. And it's, there's some of them, most of them are restored beautifully and they run. And I would love to see us have a historic garbage truck parade. Like, I think that would be so great. And I'm going to try and work with them and see if they want to do that. But if anybody has, I have a four year old grandson who loves garbage trucks, so I previewed it for him. But if anybody out there has somebody who, who wants to see garbage trucks, it's the place to go, the kids can crawl in them. I mean, it can be fun. Okay, last thing is that we are having BMW tomorrow night and we'll be serving hot dogs. It's going to be in the cafe at Our Lady of Lords. And the top of the guest speakers will be seniors versus crime and they won't be discussing. and they will be discussing aspects of stopping scammers in their tracks. So if anybody wants to learn a little bit more about stopping scammers, come on down, have a hot dog. Join us. Thank you.
So are you going to take the grandchild to the...
When he comes to Florida, yeah.
That's a heck of a grandma planning a trip when he comes.
Oh, yeah, I had to preview it.
Had to preview it. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Tijuana Doza, and on deck is James Dozer.
Hello, Tijuana James Dozer. First of all, I want to say it's very nice to be able to speak in a safe, non-threatening environment. I'm here, I'm the business owner at 560 Dr. Mary McLeod with Thune Boulevard. I'm here to speak on a couple of master plan applications, the first being BWP 2025-001. I applied for the master plan. I know the master plan has already been voted on. This is all news. I applied for the master plan. I applied on time, so I'm not asking for any type of extension or anything like that. I paid my money on time. I have an active BTR. I operate my business year-round. As you know, as I've spoken in the past, I hire college students to get back to the community. My issue that I need to discuss, one of my vendors went to apply for their BTR. They completed their application with me. They went down to City Hall to obtain their BTR. They were told that they could not be issued a BTR because I was not permitted to have food trucks on my property. So I sent an email to Ms. Rose Askew asking her for help to mitigate this issue because on my application, I selected food. On the application, I don't know how many of you have had the chance to experience the new system. I think going from paperless to computer is great. But as I explained to them, you have a system that's still being validated in real time. So you're going to have issues where, you know, you have things that need to still be debugged, et cetera. In my case, I selected only options, cooking on-site, cooking under a tent, food truck, packaged goods. Not knowing that the system does allow you to select multiple things, I would suggest that it has something that says like, check out that apply. But my diagram showed that I had food and I had retail. So I was trying to understand, well, why am I being penalized? Why is my vendor being penalized because he has a food truck? Well, I did meet, because I didn't get any response, I contacted the city manager to try to, you know, get some help. So I was directed to Mr. Jeff, and we did have a meeting. So we were able to, I think, get it resolved. Tomorrow, I'm supposed to go back down to City Hall and hopefully get the BTRs for my applicants. And, but what I want to leave you with this is the system does have some issues that need to be looked at. And I'm glad that he was open-minded and is listening to what my husband and I had to say.
Okay, your time's expired, so let's...
Thank you.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that moving forward and from the meeting, we were told that we're fine.
Thank you. Yep, yep, yep. Thank you. And Mr. Dozer, you're the final speaker tonight?
Well, I'll use that first, my first mail to piggyback off of my wife saying she didn't get to. Is that we, my wife just told me that, I guess they want to come down. We was actually wanting to rearrange our tents since we shouldn't have to select trucks. And we were going to put trucks in, because we don't know, we put it in spots. And this is our first time doing it. We don't know if we want to get a food truck, tents, or whatever. So we wanted to change our setting and include trucks too, and which we was told, no, because it wasn't on the sheet. Now my wife has told me they want to come measure the trucks when we put them out there. When all the other vendors that we have pulled up, my wife went into the system and showing that it's, everybody got trucks and tents. Everybody's showing 10 by 10. I seen two people might have showed a 10 by 2. Y'all know an food truck are 10 by 10? Do you know anybody got a 10, one, two, four, or five vendors? Got five by five, I don't know, five, two by five. 10 square foot what they paid for. Out of five vendors, they paid for 50 square feet instead of 500 square feet. I got, I got the documents right in this folder right here. Now I go to the next step. What I want to talk about is parking RVs. We got the property on 408, and we was told that we couldn't do RV parking. Well, we was told we can do RV parking. So, okay, no problem. So my wife said, okay, get clarification on that. Get it in writing. So we sent an email about to get it in writing. We asked for that request. Couple days later, we all denied you can't park RVs because of the electric panel thing, box, whatever. Okay, we're asking that next-door neighbor that got a, going to cut through her bike park, can we use your property to get to our park, to park RVs, getting away from the electrical thing or whatever? So kind of, I guess that was denied. Everything that we have tried to do is no, 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 no. And that's all. We just want to know why.